There we go.
Welcome, everybody. Few people are still filing in, but I think most people have arrived. So I'm going to start the meeting at 10:00 after. Thank you all for coming today. Welcome. And thanks to the Brooktondale Fire Department for allowing us use of this good space today. This is the third and final listening session held by the town board to hear comments from the public about our zoning initiative. Comments about the details of the 122821 draft document should be directed to the zoning commission. Such comments offered at our listening sessions have been and will be transferred to the zoning commission for their consideration. The zoning commission is considering feedback and has been answering questions as best they can. To this point, they are in the process of crafting their first draft zoning regulations and are working hard to tailor those to our town. Zoning is the only tool by which a town can direct the physical geographical pattern of development to support the goals of the town expressed in the comprehensive plan, and that is why we are committed to considering zoning for the benefit of Caroline's future and all of its residents. The listening sessions are being recorded and have been and will be posted on the town's website on the meeting minutes page of the town board. I just want to go ahead and get right to the meeting because we have a lot of speakers today. So as I think a lot of you know, the meeting guidelines are that each speaker will have three minutes, and I will let you know when you reach three minutes. We have a lot of speakers today. Comments should be directed to the town board. I'm Mark Whitmer, the town supervisor. This is Catherine Goldberg, councilperson, councilperson Kate Kelly McKenzie, and councilperson Cal Snow. Councilperson Murray has had a previous engagement, and the meeting will be recorded, and he will be listening to your comments. The purpose of the meeting is to hear from you. We will be listening. So without further ado, I would like to move to the first speaker. I think the way we have the room arranged today, we'll have each speaker stand and project as loudly as they can in their big person voice so that everyone can hear. So without further ado, Laura McDonald, did you already speak?
No, I just forgot one thing. Legally, you can protest outside as long as you are not in eating traffic in or out of anyone's home. You have every right in this state to protest, hand out flyers, do whatever you want. You can do this in front of anyone's home. I am definitely against any form of violence whatsoever. I did mention for those of you that may have been late performing in the episode, just to check on some of the allegations that are going around, because I really dislike rulers, especially false ones. So I registered as a blank. Anyone else who would like to, I'm in the phone book under Laura McDonald. I actually have a landline. And I brought food because I'm half Italian, so there's some snacks over there. Please eat. I'll keep a good mood.
Can you have people stand up front?
I don't want to be trading my neck in 50 different directions.
That would be fine with me.
Stand by, Cal.
Should we have people stand up front?
Optional.
Yeah, let's.
Optional.
Optional.
Whatever makes the speaker feel most comfortable, I would say we should do. If you want to be in place, that's great. If you want to come up here, that's also wonderful. So whatever makes everyone.
I would say that your comments are directed to the town board. So with that, move on to Margot Grill is the next speaker.
Good afternoon. Jim and I visit our address 2105 Slaterville Road, Ithaca, New York, Town of Caroline, 1981. Through these 40-plus years of joint development, we have had a nation years ago who wanted to develop their land on Landon Road. Mr. Hayden wanted to build a development of 170 modular homes on Landon Road. We know that landowners can develop their property if it meets New York State and County building codes. Mr. Hayden did fill out a secret report. The Health Department was the lead agency. We and many other community members attended the board meetings at that time. We brought our concerns regarding water runoff, traffic, and open spaces that he had said would be addressed. They had diagrams and figures for each home dimension, open space, and roadways. I did figures too, and theirs didn't match. The Health Department and Board requested that the numbers of the units be reduced. Mr. Hayden withdrew his proposal as the smaller numbers would not make it economically economical to develop. There was no zoning then. Another property adjacent to ours got developed into storage units. On your maps, you did not list it as commercial land. Again, we as taxpayers know that all people can develop their property within New York State and County guidelines. I'm not sure if the storage owners are paying taxes yet, as they develop under the Empire incentive. Having said all that, we ask you, do not pass zoning in Caroline. You listed that 52 new residents came into Caroline area in the last 10 years without, all without zoning. These numbers hardly justify zoning with the extra expense of a zoning officer, other staff, not to mention possibly legal fees and court cases, and the expense of the study and draft plan. To us, this zoning study and plan is a waste of our taxpayer dollars. Spending this amount of money in these hard times for some uncalled for is uncalled for. Many residents cannot afford their taxes, not to mention the increase of what this expense will bring. Nothing is stopping from farmers from farming in Caroline if they choose to. Many of the farmers are aging out and retiring. The town board doesn't need to allocate certain land as farmland. There may not be anyone who wants to farm within those parameters. As to the open space, owners should be able to place structures on their property where they choose to and not be dictated by the board. We have never lived on Beesmer Road. We do not consider our property as part of the Beesmer hamlet. We live on 79 at 2105 Slaterville Road, Ithaca, New York, Town of Caroline. Why are you trying to rewrite the Town of Caroline? You are discouraging people from moving into our or building in this beautiful area. We do not need a zoning board to maintain the Town of Caroline area. Please stop zoning from moving forward in the Town of Caroline. I sent this letter to the board January 25. And my husband Jim did some more research. The hamlet of Beesmer does not continue past Lounsbury Road on your map shown. Signs of Beesmer doesn't think where Beesmer is located on that group, nor does it include our property. How can you change or make maps to suit yourselves for the purpose of zoning? Public trails. The railroad bed that passes through our property was abandoned July 1, 1935. As of 1974, the inventory of the abandoned railroad right-of-way New York Department of Transportation, which includes Tompkins, states that your right-of-way appears to be private ownership, except for the town road and the parcel owned by the Brooktondale Lighting District. We have left anybody that asks to walk, ride horses, et cetera, on our property, but we are always picking up garbage from people who are not authorized to be on our land, which is posted. Trespassing on private land is illegal, whether posted or not. Punishable by a $250 fine and/or 15 days in jail. This is not new and will never be. This is not now and will never be a public trail. Why is it necessary to divide Caroline into different zone sections? You as the board are trying to micromanage our once happy community. I don't know how you can sleep after discussing all this discourse. My husband and I are not sleeping well. Your surgery was asking what we wanted in the town. We already have all those qualities without zoning. Our state and county regulations are all that we need. Please, no zoning.
Thank you, Margot. Andrew Diker.
Hi, so I want to apologize in advance. I'm a terrible public speaker. Hi, my name is Andrew Diker. My wife and I own a 100-acre farm a mile down the road from here in the Town of Caroline and rent about another 150 acres. As the proposition of implementing zoning in the town has progressed, I have been watching closely, and one of the most striking things to me is the fact that basically everyone I have listened to on both sides of the table is in essence looking for the same thing. Everyone I have heard speak on this subject all of the town we live in and don't want to see it change. The discrepancy is indifference in opinion on means to an end. As discussions around this have gone on, the most compelling argument I have personally heard in favor of zoning is preservation of farmland, open spaces, or rural character that Congress wanted to find that. Being at this point one of only a handful of people in the town who makes the entirety of their living farming, this is a subject very close to my heart that concerns me greatly. This being said, every time I hear this assertion as an argument in favor of zoning, it continues to make absolutely no sense to me. So, being what I think is a fairly reasonable and logical person, though my wife may argue this point, what did I do? I sat down and spent many, many hours trying to find examples of townships that have successfully used zoning as a tool with the specific goal of ag land and open space preservation. My assumption was the internet would be lousy with case studies with concrete data and outlines of what other townships have done and why and how it worked. Does anybody care to guess how many case studies I found outlining successful land preservation efforts? One, Penn State put out a very well-written case study of Ole Township in Berks County, PA, in 2012, and some very specific ag-related zoning was a part of the town's effort between the late 70s and now to preserve historic sites and ag land. When you actually read the whole study, zoning was basically a secondary tool used behind a massive both private and publicly funded easement program and a lot of very specific town ordinances. There are some other major differences between Ole and Caroline, the largest being that Ole started their preservation efforts while there was still a very active and successful ag community in the town, whereas Caroline did not. But that's getting off the point. The point is that basically everything I have found asserting that zoning is an effective land preservation tool is nothing more than just that, just an assertion by universities, consulting firms, et cetera, with no supporting data. And the thing about assertions is unless you're required to provide supporting data, you can make any assertion you want. I, for instance, can assert that I am the king of Prussia, or that if you drink your own urine, you'll live to be 100, but without supporting data, nobody is going to give me a crown or take a cup into the bathroom with that. So my question to the town board is where's the supporting data for the efficiency of zoning for the stated goals? I would assume that you all did your due diligence in this and have not spent tens of thousand dollars in taxpayer money and wasted countless hours of your own time and everyone's here time, here's time, on something that is no basis other than unsupported assertion. There is an old saying about assumptions, you know, makes an ass out of you and me. I'm going to say the same thing is true of assertions with no supporting evidence. So what I'm asking for is the town board to take all the compiled supporting data in regards to the efficiency of zoning in regard to land preservation, which again, assuming that you did your due diligence, you already have and posted on the town website for everyone here who has the same questions as I do to look at, since obviously by my lack of success finding anything, this data is at the very least difficult to access. Otherwise, I will have to make the assertion that this data simply does not exist, and this whole process is based on nothing other than unsupported assertion. This whole process seems based in the fundamental failure to recognize that there is often or most times a huge discrepancy between the intent of an action and the real-world results. As elective representatives of the people of this town, it is neither correct nor right to proceed without full accountability and justification for your actions.
Thank you, Andrew. Pam Austin.
Okay, so I spoke before, and my statement has to do with an issue. It's more of a social economic issue that I have heard before. I can't stand up because I can't pull my paper, but anyway. My older sister had physical disabilities most of her life. In 2009, tragedy struck, and she found herself alone. She was still able to live on her own with a small amount of help. The thought of having her to go into an assisted living, she described as going to prison. She'd lived in Caroline all her life. She had pets and loved the country. Then someone mentioned an elderly cottage program offered by Better Housing in Tompkins County. I immediately called Rick Cohen, director, and one of the first questions he asked me, does Caroline have zoning? Of course, I said no, and his response was wonderful. Mr. Cohen explained that this program was a government-funded program to protect the elderly due to the baby boomer generation coming into their elderly years. This would be an alternative for elders that would eventually need assisted living and nursing homes in the near future and still be able to independently while under the watchful and caring eye of their loving family members such as a child or grandchild. He further explained, and as we saw with COVID in the hospital, the country will be facing a surge of elderly, and we don't have a place to put them. The cottages are totally handicap accessible. We obtained permits from the Health Department for the subject. Our well had to be tested. We had obtained a special permit from the Caroline Code Enforcement and a certificate of occupancy from the town. All was done, and the little one-bedroom modular was brought to my property. My sister spent 12 years in this little cottage. Sadly, she passed away last fall, but the years of happiness she spent in her home would have never been replaced if Caroline had zoning. She would have spent her last years in misery. When I called them to come and move, to see if the little cottage would be moved for another elderly person, I was told that mostly due to government cuts and the fact that due to zoning, they no longer have townships that they can put them in. In 2009, there were five cottages, three in Lansing, one in Dambie, and ours coming to Caroline. This brings me to my point, that although the zoning commission seems highly knowledgeable regarding environmental issues, and I would like to thank them for their work they've done thus far, I worry that our social aspect and possible unintended consequences, such as the need for elderly housing on private homeowners' land, such as my sister did, could be unintentionally overlooked. People in Caroline not only want the freedom to give their children an acre or two, but children may want to give their aging parents, grandparents, a place to live in preparation for their final days. I'm wondering how many people like my sister will never know the happiness that she had at the end of her life. Yes, absolutely, we need to think about the climate change and our freshwater. However, we also need to think about everyone, including the elderly and the disabled, as not all of us are getting any younger. Furthermore, I'm asking the board to just put everything on hold, regroup, and get a total foresight with not only the environmental and the architectural issues, but also the social economic side of it all. We need to have a magnitude of information regarding not only what will benefit from zoning, but who will not benefit from zoning. We need to research and have open discussion with far more professionals than just on the climate change. We need to research so many things. For instance, like the 55 decibel, I'm told by a noise and vibration engineer, that's about the sound of a corn popper. You know, zoning was brought to light in 1910 to deliberately exclude African-Americans from neighborhoods. It was deemed illegal to discriminate against the color of someone's skin not more than 50 years ago. However, zoning still can discriminate. If we are not careful, we will discriminate against the most vulnerable, our elderly, our disabled, our lower-income families. Therefore, I'll end my statement with one opinion only. Caroline should not have zoning.
Thank you, Pam. Roberta Holcomb.
Hello, it's me again. Some of you have seen me at the last two, but I'm going to take a different little tack this time, and listening to other people speak has, you know, enlightened me on a few things as well. But what I want to do is I want to talk directly to each board member, because I want you to take into consideration the severity of you as a five-member board, one we know is not here, but as a five-member board, actually passing a law that is restricting landowner usage. You're actually, I want each of you to take to heart whether you feel comfortable with restricting landowner usage and actually basically stealing property rights with no compensation to the landowner. You're now going to be telling them what they can and cannot do on their property. Now, I want to give you a little bit example, as if each one of you would be willing to look at every landowner in the Town of Caroline in the eye and explain to each landowner exactly why you think they need zoning in this town to improve the town. And I'm going to use my mom as an example. My mom has passed away now. My mom lived in Richford, but there's plenty of people in the Town of Caroline exactly like my mother. My mother bought her property in 1960 for $6,000. In 2020, my mom's property value went to over $300,000, and my mother paying taxes of over $12,000 a year. My mother constantly said, I pay twice in taxes every year for the property that I purchased for $6,000. I'm paying $12,000 in taxes. So you, as the town board, would go up to my mother and say to her, the reason we want to restrict your property rights on your 256 acres is because we want to keep rural character in the community and for the next generation. And my mother would tell you, I did that. I did that myself all these years. I paid the taxes. I've paid my dues. I kept my farm into a farm for all those years. I didn't need zoning to do it. You're not doing nothing for me. I've kept my property for the next generation and my grandchildren. You would go to a person like my mother, a landowner, and you would feel comfortable looking them in the eye and saying, the reason that I want to restrict your property rights or tell you what to do and what you can't do on your property is to save the environment. My mother would say, I'm saving the environment by saving my land and farm. I don't need you to do that. You think when I plow my fields on the top of this hill and the water runs off and there's some erosion and stuff like that? My hill hasn't got any shorter. It's still a hill, and I still farm on a side hill. It ain't got any shorter over these years. You would tell my mother, you'd look her in the eye and be able to tell her that you're going to maintain property values if you put in zoning? My mother is going to tell you, I paid $6,000 for it. I know I'm probably getting short, that's why you're standing.
I'm just letting you know.
But they'd say, I paid $6,000 for my property. It's worth over $300,000. You're not saving the value of my property. It's going to go up, and my taxes are going to go up every year. So, you know, in your heart, you would be able to tell a person that, that that's what zoning is about? I want to just mention grants, because you do not need zoning for getting grants. If you think you do, you don't. I'm on a town board. You can get grants without zoning. You do not need grants for zoning. The other thing is laws equal lawsuits. For every law, legal issues arise about those laws. Laws equal lawsuits, and if you put in zoning, there are going to be lawsuits, discrimination lawsuits, and what everybody else is talking about. And, you know, I mean, it's a little bit different, and I also just, one thing about manufacturing, I know I'm over the limit, but when we discuss zoning in the Town of Richford, manufacturing, they say, oh, we don't want industry and manufacturing. The ones that wanted zoning didn't want that. They thought they needed zoning for that. I says, we have a manufacturing plant right in Richford. None of them we're even aware of. A guy invented a boiler system in the Town of Richford that did oil or wood you could put in your boiler. Steel came in the front end. He had all these little cutting machines and welders and stuff, and these boilers went up the back end. The people in town didn't even know about it. You do not want to stifle people who have an idea and they want to develop and do manufacturings in their home, on their ag land, whatever they want to do. I'll just mention a long-wearing duck guy that made duck balls. He made a lot of money doing that. You don't want to stifle that.
Thank you, Roberta. Ron? Ron G? I can't read the last name. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I have a property at 2434 Slaterville Road, and it was formerly Mr. Grill that owned the property. We moved out here from Michigan. I went to Michigan State University and got my degrees there, and my wife, my father, of course, we were here. We had our first child come out here. Not at 2434 Slaterville Road, in the Tompkins County area. And one of the things that bothers me about zoning is, I come from California, and I don't have to tell you what California looks like now. California, when I grew up, we would go to school and pick avocados, oranges, grapefruits. I didn't consider them stealing as a kid, but, you know, they were plentiful at the time. And we walked through some, it was called Irvine Ranch, and it was a private ranch, but there were several ranches around the area. And as I grew up, I found that there was more and more people trying to take advantage of what that Orange County had to offer. And people started moving in because the climate was great, the taxes were low, and there were jobs. And people have a habit of beating a good thing to death, and that's what Slaterville to me is a good thing. And I hate to see it get zoned so that there are apartment buildings. Apartments are, you know, important to have, but like the different construction that would be going up and the people pollution that would come in here. And that's one of the things that happened in Irvine as I grew up and I went to college out there. And I don't have to tell you what's going on now with people living on the street, sleeping on the streets in my old hometown. No narcotics all over. People taking drugs and what have you. And another thing you have to understand is police. And who's going to police? Once we do, in fact, if we did have zoning, we'd have more people here. And when you get more people here, you tend to have more problems with crime. That's another issue that we have to deal with. So I don't want to make this a town like I've seen in California, and I'd like to keep it exactly the way it is. And we grew up, my family grew up here. My friends, there's many friends in this meeting here that I have, and I just think it's a quiet community, and I'd like to have it remain there. Needless to say, I just bought a property in Candor, and that Candor is much like it is here, but they're not talking about zoning in Candor. I might have to, you know, I have to go back and forth from here to Candor and I see what's going on there, and I compare it with what's going on here. I might just have to move to Candor.
Thank you, Ron. Joe McCauley.
He said he's not talking.
Thank you, Joe. Bill Rucinko.
Good afternoon. I've been to all the news and got off and spoke. So I had a little letter here that my wife wrote, and I'd like to read that. She writes, I have lived in Caroline for the past 16 years, moving here from Binghamton. After adjusting to the quietness, it was a breath of fresh air. In Caroline, people are true neighbors looking out for each other. What zoning does is cause good neighbors to report each other for minor improvements they want to make on their home or projects. Zoning is not easy here. Zoning will only put neighbor against neighbor. Why is it that five people, people we elected, can change our lives and futures forever? The town board was elected by us to work for us, to keep our best interests at heart. for us, to keep our best interests at heart. You five need to remember, you live here too, that zoning is going to affect you and your property as well. We have been to the last two meetings, other people on Zoom at the town hall. No one has stood up to say why they are for zoning. Where are these people who think zoning will benefit us? Why are they not speaking up and letting us know who would be beneficial? An interesting appearance from them, those of us against zoning, to speak up and make our voice why we believe it will never negatively impact all of us. I realize New York State says we do not have to let the public vote on instituting zoning. Why would you not give your neighbors the right to vote on this? The people on the town board are only in office for a certain amount of time and most of us will live in Caroline for the rest of our lives. We deserve a right to vote on such a significant life change and regulation."
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Bill. Holly McGee?
These past few months, I have thought of nothing other than the dreaded Z-word. I have emailed the town board and zoning commission with every zoning concern that I have ever had. I lay awake nights pondering ways to stop zoning from going through. I spend my days, nights, and weekends emailing the board, getting signature petitions, forming protests, and putting together speeches, all in an effort for the fight against zoning. I know that the board has to be sick of me by now, but I want to let them know the feeling is mutual. After all of my sleepless nights, research, emails, a light bulb finally went off in my head and I realized why zoning is so important to Supervisor Whitmer, a few, and a few other board members. I happen to recall a statement that Mark said to us at the second zoning protest. But first, I want to recap how this statement came about. At the start of the protest, we had an American flag flying high and many town residents rallied to keep their freedoms that night. There was a young girl with her family shouting, "Zoning favors the elite and zoning kills dreams." There were people holding those zoning needed signs. Some drove large tractors and others shouted through megaphones. During all of this, Supervisor Whitmer seemed to be hiding in his office. Finally, Mark got the courage to come out and face us. We got to speak with Mark Whitmer himself, live and in person. The one statement Mark made that I clearly remember from that night was, "What if your neighbors are doing something that you don't like?" As I pondered that response, the true reasoning behind the zoning push was clear to me. My question is, "Does it seem morally and ethically appropriate to initiate zoning based on your own selfish needs? Zoning is going to have many negative effects on Caroline residents forever. I have lived in this town for 39 years and in my experience of living here, I don't recall ever having any issues with my neighbors. This is not the time to be selfish. If you're having an issue with your neighbor, put on your big boy pants and work it out. No zoning needed, no zoning wanted. Thank you."
Thank you, Holly. Sandy Clary?
All right. I didn't know.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Pam. My mom and dad were not descendants of the first generation, but they sure as hell earned the right to call Caroline your home. They bought an old farmhouse that had multiple buildings, most of which were torn down over the years. They had to do a lot of work to make the property warmer. They were not wealthy, so the work on the property was done by them. My dad had two businesses in this town. One was a garage and I found out a few years ago that he would let the teenage boys work on their cars in the garage at no cost. My dad did a lot of work for people here and he was never paid. He died without anyone knowing who owed him money and never paid. He was that kind of man. Well, Dad and Mom were active in the community. They were always doing something around the property to make it better. When they died, I inherited the property and Bruce and I have continued taking care of our property. We have planned on our children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren living here. I have lived here over 70 years and now it looks as though the town board will destroy everything we have worked for. Stuck even wrong, especially.
I just want to say I'm a neighbor for all these years and we've never had one scuffle once. He helps me all the time.
I'm glad to hear that. So, thank you, Sandra. Bruce Clary? Bruce Clary? Did Bruce want to speak?
No, Bruce is not taking one.
Great. Bob Maynard?
Well.
Mr. Maynard?
Well, I didn't know I was coming to speak today. You could tell who I am with my hat. I have lived all my life here in Caroline and never had any problems with people moving in or industry pulling up our tax base. So I kind of support all zoning.
Thank you, Bob.
I think some people signed that sheet over there and that.
Right. If you did sign in and didn't intend to speak, just let me know and we won't force you onto the stage. So, but thank you, Bob. Kip Townsend?
Can't hear you.
Kip Townsend? And I'm getting a head shake note. RC Quick?
RC?
RC.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have a, just a few remarks today, but I need your help. At the end of each remark, I will ask, "What do you say?"
No zoning.
Residents who agreed, who agree are encouraged to voice that agreement as a "yay."
Yay.
The more enthusiasm, the better. The town board is listening. Let's make sure they hear us. Here we go. Here we go. Let's end this travesty and get on with our lives.
Yay!
At the next town board meeting, how about a motion to stop this stupidity?
Yay!
The evidence is clear. The residents have spoken. There are no advantages to zoning in this town. Stop wasting our money.
Yay!
I ask that a town board member present this motion, another second it, then discuss it, and vote at the next town meeting. And remember, a vote to abstain is not a particularly courageous vote. What do you say? How about the board concentrating on things that matter?
Yay!
Ambulance service.
Yay!
Sinage on rural roads used by our farmers.
Yay!
Hidden driveway signs, speed limit signs.
Yay!
Slow down signs.
Yay!
More programs for the poor and impoverished.
Yay!
Turner lighting.
Yay!
Approaching dandy mini mart, dandy mini mart about putting diesel fuel at their heads.
Woo! Do it, do it, do it!
Work on things that matter.
Yay!
What do you say? We will not falter. We will not fail. The residents of this town will prevail. Let's finish this.
Yay!
Everyone needs time to heal. What do you say?
Yay!
Thank you.
Yay!
Yes, Bravo! 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 Love it.
Somebody got it right.
We will vote you out.
The next speaker is Ed Kurtland, please.
I'm not going to speak.
Okay, thank you. John Morris?
Hi, folks. John Morris. New faces, so I'm actually going to speak about some things I've talked about a couple times before. First of all, last week, Mark mentioned at the end that Zoom is allowed under COVID regulations. It is. And we need to respect the people's choices to protect themselves and their families if they choose to stay home. I agree. That's fine. Safety first. What we don't respect, however, is the board's decision to continue to work on zoning when all the board members can't or won't be here to see the emotion and see the hurt on people's faces. Now is not the time to be taking on something like this. Work on the streetlights, work on the ambulance, work on things like that until all the board members can be here and see how bad this is hurting people. Let's find out why we're working on zoning now. Mark stated in the Caroline Quarterly recently that there's increased growth pressure and the board felt that we must proceed without delay to fully consider a zoning plan to protect welfare and property values of residents. Let's look at this increase in growth pressure that needs to be fixed without delay. This map of residential construction in Caroline shows us, in the last decade, 2010 to 2020, there were 59 new residences built, less than six per year. Previous decade, 83. The previous decade before that, 1990 to 1999, there was over double with 131. You have to go all the way back to before 1945, before you saw a slower growth rate with residential construction than we see now. Let's talk about the businesses. Over the past 30 years, there have been approximately four to six new businesses constructed in this town in 30 years. Celebrations, the storage units, Boiseville Apartments, Suite Caroline, maybe one or two others in 30 years. Maybe there's more businesses that have developed here, but they've taken on existing properties. We've only seen construction of a very limited few. Let's talk about the census numbers for population. In 19, or 1830, we had 2,633 residents in Caroline. That's only 685 less than we have today. We've grown only 26% in 190 years. In 1990, without delay, folks, in 1990, there was 3,044, a 274 difference from today in 30 years. Only a 9% growth in 30 years. In 2015, we were actually higher estimated than today because it wasn't an actual census by 4%. So an actually 4% potential decline in the last five years since the 2020 census. So what's this tell us? It says that, and if we think about it, without the Boiseville Apartments, which Bruno tells me there's about 300 residents there, without those, we've actually seen zero population growth in 30 years. We've seen four to six new businesses in a steady decline in the residential construction. So I disagree. I don't think that increased growth pressure now is good enough reason to push forward on zoning when we can't have all the board members here.
Yeah, that's funny.
Next reason is we want to preserve the rural character of Caroline. And I think very well done. You can't find things that tell us that that's happening with other zoning projects. What creates rural character? It's not a big, single-family homes or large lots. It's the farmers who work the fields. They're the shepherds of this land, not the people living in single-family homes. I'm sorry, but Route 79 is commercial and should be. If you want to see Caroline's real character, drive down the back roads out to Speedsville. We don't need zoning to stop big business. Water and sewer do not exist here. Big business is not coming. Landscape limits a lot of what can be constructed here. The biggest thing that can hurt rural character in this town is if we squeeze out the farmers before their time with more regulations and higher taxes. We cannot legislate farming to stay, but we can legislate it out faster than it's meant to be. Last week, we spoke, or a couple people spoke in favor of zoning that would help climate change. We just eliminated a potential grocery store in Caroline that if it saved 50 people a day from driving into Etica, a gallon of gas each, that's 18,250 gallons a year. How does that help the climate by not bringing them in? Pro zoning is also said to read the common misconceptions that have been put out, the flyer that Mark and the board have put together. And it will, if we read that, then our unfounded fears, our unfounded fears will be reassured that zoning will benefit all of us in Caroline. Nothing in that document reassures me. I can promise you that. What scares me is this document. This is 130 pages of a new law for Caroline, 132. The Declaration of Independence is 112 pages. The Constitution is four pages when it was built and it's 17 pages now. Why do we need 132 pages in Caroline without delay?
Crazy.
We are not here to negotiate the details within this document. Even if this becomes a lesser document, we all know now that this is what's possible with zoning and even more. We don't want it. Zoning is restrictive.
He can have my time. He can cross me off. He can have my time.
Chance?
He can have my time.
Thank you.
I'm just letting him know.
Zoning is restrictive. It promotes self-interest by those in power. It discriminates against those financially less privileged. Ask yourself, what is in this for the less privileged? Higher taxes, bigger locks, development costs, more regulations, hard to start a business, no low-cost shopping, that's already gone. Selfishness, serving only those who can afford it. There is nothing in this for farmers. Why do we not have one farmer speaking up for zoning? Not one. What's in this for businesses? It is certainly not going to make it easier for businesses to come here and help our tax base. There is no people that own businesses speaking up. Zoning says that if you don't fit our perception of what we think belongs here, then you are not welcome here. We don't want your kind. And it's already happened. We just eliminated a Dollar General that could really help some less privileged people in the self-interest of others. Is that what we want our town to be, an oasis for the privileged? Or do we want a melting pot with equal opportunity for all? High-low income. Farms, commercial, rural, residential, et cetera. Yes, zoning has, oh, wait, as, last week, if you watched the video from last week at the two hour and seven minute mark, you will see Mark Whitmer stand up and say, and I quote exactly, "Yes, zoning has a historically bad track record and many things you mentioned are true," end quote. He goes on to explain how we won't let that happen here because we're better than what everybody's done before with zoning. State and federal governments are already realizing this issue and they are realizing the discriminatory issues associated with land use regulations and they're starting to fight it. The American Jobs Plan, put forth by the Biden-Harris administration, has in it grants to fix exclusionary zoning and to fix the persistent inequities created by it. The zoning committee was tasked with finding a plan that best fits Caroline. We already know what that plan is. It's unzoned. That's the best fit for this town. I have been keeping track for the last three weeks and as I stand here right now, it just so happens, I am the 50th person to speak against zoning in three weeks. We have had two people speak for it. The people- The people have spoken. We call for an end to this right now. Stop spending our tax dollars on this and put our resources towards something that will benefit the residents now. Ambulance, internet, farming incentives, et cetera. Vote now. This is not the time for zoning. Someday, many years down the road, that may change, but today is not the day. Town of Caroline established 1811, no zoning needed.
Thank you, John. Lori Morse?
Hi, everyone. It's my first time at a meeting. My name's Lori Morse. I'm a 24-year resident of the Town of Caroline. My husband and I own 55 acres of land between our business, our home, and our other parcel land with the intent to build a future home on. That piece of land that we currently don't have a house on, it's our playplace to camp, to ride dirt bikes, ATVs, four-wheelers, hike, hunt, do the things why we moved to the country, the things we like to do. And it's our land, our property. We get to determine the use of our property. This is why we chose Caroline. We purchased land for our business for celebrations in 1996. We chose Caroline for the rural character. We did not want a city wedding venue with four walls. You know, we wanted a unique country venue with landscape grounds to enjoy, and easy parking, and a beautiful view. Another key factor in selecting Caroline is the proximity to Ithaca and all the other towns around. But Caroline, you know, it didn't have zoning. It was perfect. Let's build there. When we left our professional corporate careers, you know, for the American dream, to own our own small business, to be in charge of our own future. This has been a very challenging adventure. The amount of hard work, capital expenditures, sacrifices have been extreme. In 1996, the Caroline Town Board was excited for the opportunity of a new business that would bring to the community. It's a complete opposite position from the Town Board of today. The Town Board of 1996 saw the growth of our business would bring to the community with income, employment, and opportunity. That Town Board was happy to see a new business and helped us in planning and permitting business process. They even went to bat for us at the state level. We, like all of you, have invested our time, our heart, our soul, and our money into Caroline. We have worked hard for our land and our property and everything we have. We take pride in our land and our property. We respect our neighbors. We do not have the right to tell our neighbors what to do with their property, just like they don't have the right to tell us what to do with ours. We are all neighbors. We want to have a prosperous, safe place to live and raise our families and run our business. Now, 2020 brought on COVID. The complete government overreach of the shutdowns was complete devastation on everybody, on the economy, on families. You know, why did the town at this point decide to talk about the whole zoning? The amount of time it has taken on everybody, the toll of time, the financial. You know, you don't push the little guy down when they're down. You're supposed to reach down and pick them up and pull them out. Help farmers and other families instead of all this zoning nonsense. It's just a senseless time, you know, to do it during a pandemic. Look around at this room. Look at the support, like John said. Everybody's speaking out so far for the majority, no zoning. We are Caroline. We are neighbors. We are working-class people. We respect our land. We respect our neighbors. We work hard for our property. It's our investment. It's up to us to protect that investment. We don't need the town to do that for us, okay? Caroline high, Caroline strong, and no zoning.
Thank you, Lori. Bonnie Hargraves?
My name is Bonnie Chris Bell Hargraves, and I own land here with my family. I, it's a farm that John was just talking about. My 90-year-old daughter, Rachel, also wanted me to share these thoughts with the board. I'm here to address the Town Board. We feel you're not listening to what the majority of people in our town are clearly saying and that they do not want zoning. It is clear that you are still not listening and have your own agenda in pushing the zoning law through. I grew up poor on a dairy farm here with my parents buying the farm one cow at a time. They would sit around the kitchen table, talking about whether they had enough money to buy one more cow and to eventually buy the farm. This new zoning law requires a resident to only be able to work themselves and hire two more people before they have to move out of the Town of Caroline to grow a home business. You are taking away the possibility of building a business like my parents did in the Town of Caroline. Is this the message you want to give people who are trying to start and grow home businesses here? These dreams have been replaced with the dream of having a mega mansion on three acres, if you can even afford it. Think of the number of home businesses that exist in the Town of Caroline today that would not have been possible under this zoning law, including our own farm. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Heidi Mosch, Kelly Martin?
Mesh, Heidi Mesh.
Heidi Mesh, yeah.
My name is Heidi Mesh. I'm 52 years old, and I've lived most of my life in this town, Slaterville Springs. I love this town. I own my own house and land, and I raise my three sons here. I grew up on a small farm on 600 Road with my brother Danny. We spent many days playing in the creek, sledding in the fields, fishing, or skating on the pond. Our dad, Dave Mesh, has lived there on 600 Road since he was 12 years old. That's almost 65 years, farming, hunting, taking care of the land, and his animals and his family. My mother, Martha Wetzel, came here from California with Dad, and she's still here. She's remarried. She lives in the town, and she's co-running gaggle company with Kim Wetzel. They care for and operate many businesses. They pay lots of taxes. We have all read the draft of the zoning law, and no one in my family supports it at all in any form. I'm going to read you a letter written by Kelly, who's also a lifelong resident and a very dear friend. Dear Mark Whitmer and the board, I live on Midline Road. I'm a lifelong resident of Slaterville Springs in the Town of Caroline. I have family and friends here. I'm a combat veteran. I'm a homeowner and a landowner. I have voted in this town my whole life, even while deployed overseas. I'm still confused about the situation we are here in, that you and your constituents have spearheaded a plan to zone our town. I feel like you've invaded our town with city ideas. Why do you feel the need to control our property? I'm a multi-generational resident who has invested interest in the land that my progenitors have owned, paid taxes on, harvested lumber, game, natural vegetation for food, recreation, and profit. I can't fathom the amount of taxes the landowners in this town have paid so that the Town and County residents can enjoy the privilege of our infrastructure. I fear that you and the board members have no idea what it is like to be a multi-generational landowner. We were raised to respect the land we walked on, even if it was not ours. Quote, "Treat it like you would treat yours," was drummed into us as children, and respect was given as well. I just ask you to consider why in your mind you feel the need to control the overall demographic and the structure of our town. I know I can speak for a large percentage of residents, both small and large tract owners, and say, we have been stewards of our town and land long before any supporters of zoning ever even lived in this area and enjoyed our view. I ask you to reconsider any zoning until you have spoken to and really listened to more residents. The last time I knew, you worked for the whole town, not just the residents who voted you in. I believe this is an attempt to gain more control over our land. I don't think using the quote, "sustainability, environmental protection," quote, "ploy" is a healthy thing for anyone, and I think this is a feeble attempt for you as a board to leave a legacy behind without any care or consideration for anybody but yourselves. I pose one final question. What is your true reason to zone our town? Why has it suddenly become so urgent to you? Sincerely, Kelly Martin.
Thank you, Heidi. It's been Kelly. Harold Phoenix?
John, do you need more time?
Just tell us what you think.
Tell us, John. Lisa, what do you have to say?
Well, I'll bet you 90% of the people here know that this is not a listening system meeting because you're not listening. You should have known this a long time before today. The other thing is, I'll bet you I've lived in the Town of Caroline longer than any of you except for Calstone. And a lot of us have lived here longer than you, any of you, or other than Calstone.
And we're office-length longer.
And we don't want zoning. We do not need zoning.
Thank you, Harold.
I've been in office longer than anybody.
Connie Bulger?
Connie, you're going to speak?
No, I'm sorry.
I side your, what, even. I see a commercial here.
Great, okay. Sorry. Jonathan Comstock?
So, with some accommodation because there's a lot of passion here. I am a 30-year resident of Caroline, and I am here to wait for support for some rational plan for zoning. I was unable to go to the last two meetings because I was out of town, but I've heard a lot today that has made me think. I've been impressed with the passions and the articulate expression of them. I do think that there's a lot of, I haven't come to understand from the talks, why careful zoning, which makes very few restrictions on rural farming land, is a devastation and destroys the ability to work those farms or to otherwise function. And I think also the ability to have home businesses is also pretty well protected in the current draft.
Is that where you live?
Yeah.
No, no.
No, no other speaker, no other speaker was interrupted.
So, point of order.
So, we are not going to interrupt anyone.
Let's talk, everybody be quiet.
Please let the speaker continue. Thank you.
Anyway, none of us want invasive rules. I don't. You know, there are a lot of things that I, we're kind of on a laundry list, and maybe most of you aren't, they are the things you're worried about. But we want home businesses to be easily expressed.
They are now.
Point of order.
And other prohibited animals, you know, to say that they can't have them in our yards. We don't want different building codes impacting similar residents based on what zone they're in. We don't want our farmers told how to farm by the local Town Board. And so I guess, you know, I don't think that the proposed law does those things. I, you know, I've lived here for 30 years, as I said. I've got neighbors from all lots of life, you know, they're half a mile away, but those are neighbors in my neighborhood. And we all get along, I agree. We haven't needed any special rules to get along up there. But that doesn't mean that nothing can happen in the town that zoning could protect us from, you know? So, anyway, I thank you, and I have been given a lot to think about in the course of this meeting, but I still, at the moment, would support that some form was effective.
Thank you for speaking. I appreciate it. We may have a different view, but we wanted to listen to yours. Thank you.
Mary Alice Kobler?
My name is Mary Alice Kobler, and we have lived in the Town of Caroline for years. We get along with all of our neighbors, especially because so many of them don't do the same things that we do. We're part of a hermit style family. We don't market than half of the food that we eat, and we give the rest of it to the food bank. So, we're connected, but I don't really believe in that. But I would say, dear neighbors, neighbors is how I feel about everyone who lives in Caroline. I am deeply saddened by the signs I see and the division and anger I feel from some of my neighbors, not my immediate neighbors. Protecting our beloved town is the best reason I can think of to come together and make a plan for how to protect it. Zoning is simply a planning process that will serve to protect what we love. Zoning is the only way that we can keep toxic, polluting industries from locating here. I, for one, do not want to have the extended commetos dump out here. Research shows the places without zoning laws are exactly where such things are built. I don't believe that zoning has all these characteristics that I'm hearing, but I really appreciate being here because I haven't heard, like I said, I'm a hermit. I haven't heard all of your reasoning, so it's really nice to be here today. I have really had a few medical issues. Actually, we didn't do any, you know, let me do this. I commend, I commend and thank the board and zoning commission for their very hard work trying to gauge everyone in the process of making common sense rules for how Caroline can continue to thrive. These plans have nothing in them that will change our ability to buy or sell roadside produce, eggs, meat. Farming is governed by the state, not by any local zoning. I, for one, spoke up last year in favor of Tony Tavelli getting his trying sensitive permits for building his and his neighbor's solar farm. My reasoning and support was due to the fact that solar farms have an average lifespan of 25 years service, after which they can be refurbished or dismantled. Either way, the farmland is still intact. Also, as an added benefit, sheep are the best way to keep the vegetation cut back between families and offer another source of income. I appreciate that the board listened to those concerns. In fact, I believe the board has the best intentions to engage we, the people, in a process that is aimed at preserving our lifestyle and our harmony. The attitude that I see in all the signs around town that alarm me is, whatever it is, I'm against it. And I find it's unhelpful and causes argument. We're critical discourse would better serve us all. Zoning is the planning stages and still very much open to revisions that will try to serve us, all of us. We are all neighbors and should treat each other with the respect that we wish to be treated with. I learned that at my mother's funeral, and she heard her mother's name, and she respected. And she said this to my mother.
Thank you, Mary Alice. Anna Gibson?
Come on, this is gonna be for the row. About four years ago, my brother and I bought 40 acres of land on Baylor Road during urban planning. We still houses and have been engaged in separate farming activities. I have loved the natural beauty of Caroline since I moved back. I love the view of the fields and woods on hillside across Old 76 Road and my house. I love my own fields and woods that are still home to songbirds and turkeys boxes and deer. From what I have read, I think zoning can help for... From what I have read, I think zoning can help protect this whole field. If I were to buy the same property after zoning is adopted, I would still be able to build a house and a barn on it. I would still be able to build a small cabin I have on the two adjacent acres I purchased as a buffer zone. For me personally, zoning would not impose any unerisked restrictions. For the community as a whole, using zoning to sensibly manage housing density and hopefully concentrate, commercial developments around the hamlet seems like a good idea. I grew up in the suburbs of Rochester. It was a decent place to live, safe, predictable, good schools, and boring. I knew I didn't want a suburban life as an adult. I hope, I would hate to see Caroline become just a suburb of Ithaca. I hope zoning can be structured to protect farmland, wetlands, streams, and riverlands from sprawl. I hope it will help preserve habitats for the other creatures who live here, butterflies, the bats, red dooks, to a few bears. I know, and I've really gotten that clear today, that a lot of you think we don't need zoning, that things are fine as they have always been. But sadly, I don't think we can count on that. Whether we like it or not, change is coming our way. We can't afford to take the natural beauty of Caroline for granted. Our beautiful town is not immune to suburban sprawl or climate change. I think we need to have zoning to protect it rather than shake our heads later. And more in the following applause.
Thank you, Anna. Steve Kress?
Thank you all for sharing the opinions you have, points of view are very enlightening to me. This is the first time I've attended one of these zoning meetings. Listen, we are residents of this town for twenty-five years, raised three children here, been part of public schools. So, so as taxpayers along with everyone else, here's a few thoughts in this process. It is, in fact, the rural nature that everyone here has such strong admiration of that attracted us as well. You know, the forests, the wetlands, it's all part of what makes this special. We're so part, happy to be part of all that. We do favor efforts to protect this rural landscape and think that we cannot be sure what the future holds, but I know that we are not isolated from the world around us. We're part of it. So, thinking ahead, I know that's what the zoning group is trying to do. We support consideration of coming up with a plan that meets the needs of this community. Something that's crafted specifically for this community. We make our living by writing and teaching wildlife. Wildlife that has no voice, wildlife that is not present in the room. So, in some ways, we're here to speak for the wildlife. Keeping bird healthy communities is vital to the health of us all. So, we hope that this planning process proceeds thoughtfully, that we do all listen to the facts. Not only for the board who listened to us, but we listen to each other and we think about new ideas, new visions that others in this room are sharing. Smart zoning will help to protect the open space, the large blocks of natural areas necessary for thriving wildlife populations and for thriving human communities as well.
Thank you, Steve. Melissa Marion?
Hi, my name is Melissa Marion. My husband and I both have lived in Caroline our whole life. He is the fifth generation of the Jacini Osmond side and the fourth generation of the Marion Crispell side. In the eighteen eighties, his great-grandfather built a farmhouse over on Caroline D'Ebor Road. At one time, it was a general store, a post office. His great-grandmother was the post mistress. At some point, the store closed and the post office moved and they turned that whole house into a family home. My husband, his cousins, were all raised in that home. My husband was raised at that house. His grandmother, who was an Osmond, married his grandfather, Paul Rasmann. They raised three girls there. And then Jared's mother raised him. And then his aunt raised his cousin there, too. Both his grandparents were schoolteachers here. And many people knew Elizabeth and Paul Rasmann. When they both passed, my husband and I were very fortunate that they gave him and I this house and small piece of land. Now we have a daughter. She's ten years old and has lots of special needs. So, my dream was to be able to build her a safe place where she can be, feel like she is an adult, but have us close by. Because of, if zoning gets passed, this did not happen because unfortunately, the land that they have over on Caroline D'Ebor Road is less than two acres. So, if zoning passed, my dream and my husband's dream had gone down the drain. Back then, we didn't need zoning and now we don't need zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yep.
Jennifer Rich?
I'm going to read Jennifer Rich's letter. Just give me one second. Sorry I cannot be here today, but my name is Jennifer Rich. If you can't connect the dots by my last name, my fifth grand, my fifth great-grandfather, Captain David Rich, found Caroline. Dr. Joseph Speed, who settled in Speedville, is my fifth great-grandfather. My grandmother, my grandfather, Bill Rich Senior, was born in Speedville and lived in Caroline most of his life. My mother, Louis, Louise Rich, and I were both raised in Caroline. My mother and I both went to Caroline School along with my children. The town hasn't changed much in the thirty-seven years and I love it for that. We don't need zoning. We need to leave Caroline how it is. My ancestors are per settlers, would not want this. We do not want it.
Thank you, Jennifer. Darla Van Ostrand?
My name is Darla Edgerton Van Ostrand. I lived here all my life. I've heard great things. Mr. Morse, thank you so much for bringing the facts up about how Caroline has not been inundated with growth in the last hundred years or more. And I'm wondering, as someone else said, is this to do with you want to leave a legacy? You can say you were a board member that created zoning in Caroline. That's not a reason they have zoning. More time, we need, we need more time for this. We need to know why exactly, how exactly is this young man over here pointing out, how are you going to protect? What are, what are the protections you're writing in here? And, and why, you know, we're all neighbors. Caroline looks after Caroline. Every moment, I'm never crying. If we didn't, it was very lit and it was probably someone drunk driving, you know? I was having a bust in, I was never hit by a car. And I'm sure there's times that I probably should have hit by a car because I would have killed myself. But we go to each other and we help each other help. We're there for each other. Just like someone else has said, it's sad and tired part that we're all in such loggerheads together. I want to protect our farms. We need more farm. We're going to face a famine and I hope you all realize that. We need more farming, not less. And if this is going to drive our farmers away, then I say no zoning, none. I went to college, a lot of people here, many don't need a college degree to be caring people, to be, to be contributing members of this town. And our taxes are not going to be. We, as approaching a senior citizen, my husband is a senior citizen, it's tough to pay our taxes. And it's going to get tougher because social security isn't getting any better and our investments probably are not going to get any better if we don't lose them all because of what's thrown down in the world. We don't need more taxes. Someone said focus on ambulances. We need an ambulance service. We have to kind of bangs ambulance taking fifteen minutes to come from Ithaca. Or more.
More!
We have, I'm getting older. People in this room are getting older. I know some of you might be saying, let's just wait them out, they'll die off. These rednecks. They're dying to be a redneck. I understand your point of view. I fear that Ithaca will sprawl into Caroline. But I don't see a hundred and thirty-nine page document stopping that. There's always ways around that. And the more government in our lives, the worse our lives get. Yes, Obamacare was not as pleasant. I tried to get it, someone working part-time, but I couldn't get it. I didn't qualify for Medicaid. So, and any insurance I could have got, I said, told my work, I'll just pay the higher rate because it's even higher on Obama. On showing the American Medical Act, or whatever it's called. That, too, was a legacy that Obama wanted to leave. It's all about power. This is about power. We don't need, if you want to use up a sticker, put it on no more than fifty pages. No, no. Hear me out, people. Put it on, no, make it some other thing that we can vote on. So, yes.
Thank you, Darla. Tonia Van Camp?
Tonia, you're probably sick of me by now, but you've heard me speak about the inequalities that zoning creates and that invariably discriminates against low-income people. The White House itself has a page on its website about discriminatory zoning. I spoke last week about how the DEC has a tremendous amount of environmental protection and that the zoning proposal will do absolutely nothing to contribute to environmental impact that haven't already been covered by existing regulations. Today, I want to talk about myself. I have a barn and I have a dream. My barn is glorious. Well, to me it is. The first time I walked into the house that I wanted to buy, I loved how practical and efficient the layout was. When I walked into the barn, though, that's when my eyes got misty. It's a simple steel-sided pole barn with a gravel floor. Immediately, I envisioned it with a concrete floor and a small bathroom, a space where I could restore campers or furniture and use it for a business. It could also be a place for summer get-togethers with live music, a place for the kids to hang out and play ping pong and climb on an indoor bouldering wall. To say the least, the barn was one of the primary things that made me want to buy the house. The zoning proposal will squash those dreams. Yes, I read the document, Common Misperceptions About Possible Caroline Zoning Regulations that the zoning commission released. But you see, my barn is in a water resource overlay. Actually, my entire tiny little property lies in a water resource overlay. I understand that the structures on my property will be grandfathered in. By the way, I also have two sheds. So, that makes my town three non-conforming structures on point six acres. The upgrades to my barn will not be categorized as regular maintenance and upkeep. Can you honestly tell me that it won't be an expensive nightmare and hassle for me to do what I want to do with my barn in a water resource overlay? I was planning to do much of the work myself with the help of friends because I am low-income. It was already an expensive proposition for me. But now I am asking, how many hoops will I have to jump through to get there? How many times will I be told no? How much money will it cost me to appeal a decision or multiple decisions? Those questions and seeing what my friend Karina dealt with in Dambie, who spoke last week, and having her dreams completely obliterated by the zoning board, makes me wonder if it's even worth it. It makes me wonder if maybe I'd be better off moving. Or perhaps I can just respectfully ask Mark, will you pay the fees and make the necessary appearances before the board's zoning? How many others like me are there in our community? Basically, every major vote in Caroline is covered by the water resource overlay. When people were settling this area, they built their homes near the roads. I didn't have time to do the research, but I would like to know exactly how many homes lie in those overlay areas. I'm sure it is a good percentage. Often, the homes on the busy roads are lower value. The people that can afford those properties are less likely to have the time, energy, or money to deal with the hassle of fighting to be able to build a structure or an outbuilding. And why shouldn't they be able to? They will already have to follow the DEC regulations and New York State Building Post. Why does the town want to make it more difficult? You can try to tell me and tell your boo in the face that this proposal isn't discriminatory, but it is. I urge the board to drop this entire thing, take the rest of the money allocated toward this process, and put it toward reinstating our ambulance and other circumstances. Why aren't we talking about how many people have died in Caroline because things can't get here fast enough? Is it because the ambulance doesn't generate revenue for the town? I'll leave you with one other fun little side note. If I had to replace my well under the zoning proposal, it would have to be one hundred feet from the stream. That puts my well on Highway seventy-nine. Have fun driving around it.
Bev Liddington?
Who?
Beverly Liddington?
I don't think I want to speak at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Bev. Jareen and Bruce Murray?
You.
Did you?
You're up.
I'm up.
Okay. Thank you.
She says I'll speak today.
Tom and Karen Reponey?
Yes. You don't know me, I'm Tom Reponey. I'm third generation down in Caroline, lived in Brooktondale all my life. A lot that I'd like to say, but I do want to thank everybody that worked so hard to dig into a lot of facts and bring them to light and bring them forward to the town. I really appreciate that, I really do. When I became aware of the work that was being done on the zoning proposal, I was kind of ambivalent to the subject. I was kind of see how it all played out. Yeah, honestly, this is my first meeting, although I'll assume and every other thing that's going on. I really tried to look at advantages, disadvantages, the zoning and how it, longer discussion played out, from where I read about it, the wish list of things that were in it that I believe are kind of stuck in there. I've made a decision that I don't think zoning has warned it at this point, in my opinion. There are already laws, rules, guidelines already in place by every layer of government. We don't need one more. I'd like, it's like hitting a tack with a sledgehammer at this point. It really is. So, with all that said, let's just move on with this. It's pretty apparent what's going on. There's not a lot of growth. Everybody gets along here well. I really see this dividing a town like a lot of people have seen, has been divided over this. We all have a lot of money invested in property. We pay tax over the years, our parents, our grandparents, and we live on that property now. now. We don't need one more layer of government.
Arnd Johnson? Am I got that right?
What's the name of the case?
Arnd Johnson.
Arnd, Arnd Johnson.
That's the wrong list, sorry.
Okay.
He's not here.
He is.
Yeah, he's here.
He doesn't want to talk.
Julie Hansen? She may have left. Is Julie Hansen here? Amy Martin Leonard?
No.
No? Okay. Kim Case?
I signed the wrong list.
Do you want to change your mind? Cal?
You don't want to read it.
Is it Chad?
It's Charles Hamilton. He signed the wrong list as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, he did as well.
William, Bill?
Wrong list.
I have nothing more I can say other than I'm totally against zoning.
Okay.
Ditto.
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 Okay. Cooper or not, I don't see a P either.
Did I sign the wrong list? I wanted to speak.
You are on the next page.
Okay, good.
Okay. I think we can move to the next page.
And this, I can't read it. Can you read that?
Nope. I can't read it. So, people can speak up if they don't get called on. Charles Mettler?
I've lived in town of Caroline for seventy years now. And as far as I can see, we don't need this damn zoning.
Amen.
If you need money that bad, why don't you go after people that have broken the town ordinances? But kids that live across the road from me with illegal junk junkyard. You've been after them now for how many years? And you keep telling me, well, we've got our lawyers going after them. How many years have you told me that? And you've done nothing. You need money, go after these broke-down places. We don't need a zoning board. We've already got ordinances against them. We don't need the damn zoning. We've got ordinances already.
Thank you, Charles. Chip?
Okay. I've lived in Slaterville for approximately fifteen years now. And from what I can see, they're saying we need this zoning. Wrong. This town governed itself better than anything I have ever seen. I've lived quite a few different places in my life. And this town is the nicest place that anybody could ever ask to live. So, keep your zoning the hell out of here. It's zoned itself for what, a hundred years? Even a month? Don't fix what is not grown.
David and Ann Vandemark?
I think we signed the wrong list. But I will say, I guess, sitting here thinking and listening, that, one, when I see zoning, every time I drive down Slaterville Road, I see a sign of Dryden zoning next to Chris Bell's garage, right down the road from where there was a fire, and there's a list of debris, and I speak of it every time I go down. And if that's an example of zoning, that's a poor example to be presenting every day when we drive by it. Also, I would say, I think I concur with others. I think you're looking at a detriment to many people who live here by imposing rules. You're saying you've had no value in this town and, you know, I don't understand half of it. I've tried to read it. I don't understand the overlays. And I'm usually not a speaker, so I just, I don't understand it, but I don't understand the benefits. And I think those should be pronounced more than just giving a hundred and thirty-page document. Let's make it in people language.
Julie Sorrell?
I gave up my time, but a lot of people have declined, so I'm gonna speak. I would say, no, if you're asking us, we don't want zoning. I would say, if you want zoning, then maybe you should move to one of the other towns that have zoning. This town doesn't want zoning. And after zoning is enacted, which I'm sure it will be because you have decided it's going to be enacted, I looked in your face last week when I said, how many signatures would it take for you to not do zoning to prove that we don't want zoning? I could see in the look of your eye that it didn't matter how many signatures that we got or how many people voiced their opinion and they didn't want it. But I would say that after you do this, you all have to live in Caroline. And I don't think that Caroline will be very happy to have you. On the subject of what we could do with the money that you're wasting on this ridiculous proposal, about a month ago, I had to go to the hospital. I had a heart problem. And I called a friend to take me to the hospital because it was faster than waiting for the ambulance to come all the way out to my house and get me back to the hospital. And the hospital people said I could've died in that car on the way to the hospital. And I thought about it while I was waiting for the person to come get me. And it scared me, but I was afraid if I sent them back, then I'd still have to wait for the ambulance to come out. And so, I took the ride instead. And one last thing I'd like to say is if you put together a zoning document that had two lines in it, please take care of Caroline. I would still be against the zoning document because zoning is something that has scope creep. It means that in future boards will come in and add more things and more things and more things that we don't want in zoning, even if you think you have our best interest in mind, in heart. We can't trust those people to have our interest in heart, just like we haven't been able to trust you because you're not doing what we want and what we elected you to do.
Ken Miller?
Ken Miller, I've got a farm over on Landon Road. Work about a hundred and seventy-five acres. Try to get along with all my neighbors. Worked hard to keep it going. Sometimes things get tough. When things get tough, we start looking at what little piece of land that I need or don't need. I actually own quite a little bit of poor land. So, I took a good look and said, well... A group came to me and said, we'd like to put a commercial place up on several different spots that you own land. I own land right up there on Seventy-Nine. We talked about it. I thought about... I don't know a lot of my neighbors, but I know what, if I was any of my neighbors, I would like or wouldn't like. And out of several spots, I chose the best one that I felt could satisfy all my neighbors. And I want to apologize, this ruckus of zoning and everything started from that. Because, so I want to apologize to all of you that don't want the zoning and all the Caroline residents here that don't want it. Those that do without it, wouldn't even know that we might have it. I hope we don't have it. Anyway, a couple of people that were against that thing, not even having any idea where it might go or not, got that swarmed. From there, it spread. And so, I want to apologize to you for that. I'm gonna go out here, even though then I couldn't sell that land, I've worked hard, my wife has worked hard with me to keep our farm going and to pay the taxes in Caroline. I like working for myself, but more and more, I feel that I'm working for the town, more and more for myself to pay taxes and the salaries of the board. I've worked hard to pay off all of my mortgages on the farms. I find it hard to swallow working to pay rent, to keep everything that I've paid off in my ownership, power ownership. I don't feel I'm putting, I'm getting listened to for receiving the health and safety from the town that they promised it, that, all the time that they talk about. No ambulance, no signs of hidden driveways, no speed limit signs along where we're at, no slow-down tractors ahead signs. These are the type of things that are hurting us right now with the increase in residences near our farm. Don't have any problem with them coming in. They built the type of house they like, even if they are ugly. But I wanted to let you know that the farming is going to keep on going in this town. We keep things open, but you cannot legislate through zoning farms to stay in this town. In fact, I've noticed already, people trying to get rid of an acre or two of the land because they won't get, be able, they don't have the land to meet the sales of the zoning plan. I want to talk about one of, a couple of other things too. Back in the early years of the comprehensive plan, there were some things done and then they had to revise it. In revision, people on the planning board felt that it was crucial to add the following statement of commitment of, to equity, diversity, and inclusion to the vision of what Caroline would be like twenty years from now. Quote, in the comprehensive plan, quote, "People of all identities, including but not limited to race, gender, sexual orientation, age, religion, disability, national origin, veteran status, and many other individuals, no matter what economic, how economic you were situated, are safe and welcome and valued. The support of a neighborly ethos of a small rural community is extended to all residents as a town, as the town recognizes the value of that diversity of all identities beings. The town is actively engaged in anti-racist initiatives and policies to guide town decisions." I don't understand then, how those people of the planning board and of the town board who have passed this comprehensive plan and say these type of things can endorse this idea of equity with, of equality when zoning is so prejudicial. One area that I'm particularly opposed to, don't understand, it's an area of a hamlet of Beesmer. And it, Beesmers, if you want to call it a hamlet, has two signs, one in the beginning and one in the end. No matter which way you go, if you blink, you'll miss both of them. But the planning has decided that it will be all the way up Seventy-Nine to near the celebrations. Well, that's, you might be, think, why is that? Seventy-Nine is the best commercial route that we have. Okay? I can tell you why. There are one or two people, no, there are two or more people that I know that live right there on Seventy-Nine that are in that corridor. And how they can come, bring themselves to believe that they belong to Beesmer Hamlet, I don't know. But they are just against their site views and commercial business along there. And yet, at the same time, there is a lot of commercial business along that route that they haven't even counted on and should be included in the commercial law. Anyway, in cases like this, those members should refuse themselves from voting on whether zoning or no zoning. So, please abandon the zoning effort and begin to actually bring about better health and safety to our communities.
Thank you, Ken. Jim Reponey?
Did you want to speak?
Couldn't hear you.
Oh, sorry, Chip.
Pretty much everybody said everything you want to say, especially the guy back there with the white beard. You know, if it's not broke, leave it alone. Two hundred years of this area doing by itself is doing just fine. We don't need to change a damn thing. The trail thing from Albany all the way out to Herkimer County, that's been a problem for years. There's been armed robberies, muggings, rapes, flashers, drug dealers, everything. It had stretched along the area. It came out. I already talked to Bruno over here about that and Dryden and state police, something to look for when it starts going, you know? Because what they ended up doing is taking sheriff and state police women, putting them in hot shorts and tank tops and putting their fanny pack on with a gun and a badge and a set of cuffs. And once they seen someone jump out and do something, they cuffed them, hooked them to their bicycle and took them to the nearest location, and they picked them up in a car and they went down and tried to get another one. So, those things, they're not good, especially with drug deals. That's a perfect place to go, but it's hard to get out of. These trails, they seem to lead to the Cottington Road houses through the back doors of some of the houses a while back. And to take it anywhere, it's just gonna be bad for the landowners and the people that own houses along there. And the police will be really, really, they're really gonna need four-wheel drives then or the ATVs to get down those trails to cut them. That's about it. I'm not for this at all. This privilege of doing the zoning is only gonna bring in privileged people to buy the property that can afford it. And I've had two people from Connecticut ask me if I wanted to sell, yeah, thirty thousand an acre. I mean, you want to buy it. They're not gonna, they don't want to pay that much. So, zoning's good, it's not good. Like I said, two hundred years of work and you need another two hundred years to keep working the same way.
I am Brandon Wiley. For those who don't know me, I'm a resident since the blizzard of ninety-three and I'm a business owner here. I don't have much to say, but John Snow's sign inspired part of what I'm gonna tell If you want zoning, move. There's a lot of neighboring towns that have zoning. I propose you sell your house, which is worth a lot more than it used to be in the current market. Go buy some land in one of these neighboring towns and go to their zoning review process. Try to build a house there. See how it works out for you. I agree zoning's discriminatory to lower income, shattering dreams of people of our town. And we don't need it, we don't want it, no form of it in any way. No zoning needed.
Thank you, Brandon. Hannah? Hannah Wiley?
Hi, a lot of new faces. Hannah was born and raised on Crispell Farms on Hartford Road with my brother and my dad's over there in the doorway. My aunts over there and cousins and anyway, I know a lot of faces in here. I want to just touch base on the ambulance thing real quick. So like, my understanding, back in the, like, you know, we, we didn't have an ambulance, we don't have an ambulance now because people think that there wasn't volunteers, that's actually not the case. When I was a teenager, I was in Slaterville Fire Department. The explorers thing, it was awesome, so much fun, I totally loved it. I liked Joey and a bunch of kids from town were in it with us. But then the time came where we were told, well, you've got to go pay several thousand dollars to get your EMS or go to fire school in order to be part of the fire department. What 15-year-old has a couple grand laying around? Like, so I'm just, I'm just saying, anyway, maybe tax money should, or something, some sort of fundraiser or something. If we ever did buy an ambulance, maybe that's what happened. Oh anyways, so once zoning's here, it's here to stay and it can be altered after, that's what scares the hell out of me. And Mark Whitmer did say himself last week that zoning does not have a good track record. That was refreshing to hear, but it also makes me wonder more, what we're doing here? Farmers have got it pretty tough, we're always dumping money in to something. Mother nature is not kind to us. Fertilizer is 2.5 times more than it was just last year. A back tire for a tractor cost $1,300 last year and over $2,000 this year. Fuel prices are the highest we've ever seen. We've got tractors, trucks, dump trucks, skid steers and galore that all need to be maintenance and up and running for crop season. Things break left and right, especially as soon as we have anything to do that we have to spend money to fix. Seed prices are up, we cannot afford a new pair of durable barn boots, we wear those 365 days a year. We have to buy things on sale or clearance, we can't afford to drive to Ithaca for necessities anymore. We deprive ourselves of material things and family vacations because one of us always has to stay here and run the farm. Sorry. Cows break, everything, everything, always dumping money in. We raise beef cattle that want to kill us when it comes time to capture them for a measly $1,200 check. We have to be in 10 places at once, running our asses off to get our crops in with no hired help, just the three of us. Taxes are higher, just like always, because those don't go down. But my dad still hand-delivered the taxes to Whitmer just the other day and also had to pay more because he didn't have the money to pay in January. So our hard-earned tax dollars are being spent on this, it is shameful. Zoning will not help farmers not one bit. This will push farmers out and then who's going to farm the land when we're gone? We have what we have because we want it and we keep it, we need it. But if we were to need to sell a little bit of land in order to pay the taxes, we should be able to do that however the hell we want, it's been in our family 175 years. We're having a hard enough time already, we don't need extra red tape and regulations, added costs and delays that zoning will bring. Let's be real, we live in New York State guys, that comes with enough rules and regulations. Zoning will take money out of our pockets. We have enough regulations already, we're struggling enough already. Stop claiming this is to help Keith Caroline Rural, we do that. There's like a dozen farmers in here. We don't want you interfering with our lives and how we live them here, please drop this, leave us the hell alone, thank you.
Rick Rosoff?
Who, Rick Rosoff?
Rick, Rick Rosoff? He's still here? No, okay. John, what, John Lipka?
Oh yeah, John Carson.
Oh, oh, okay, John Carson? Did you want to speak?
I must have signed the wrong list, but I don't know why we continue to talk about this. It doesn't seem like anybody wants to, except for a few people with face masks on. So, you know, I've lived here for a long time and Buffalo Hill Road has looked like it's an eyesore for as long as I've been a kid. That hasn't been cleaned up. So, how is, how is this going to help?
I look on Blackman Hill Road, you think Buffalo Hill Road is bad?
Same thing, well, a lot of us are all going that same way because we can't afford our taxes. So things just keep going downhill.
It's not a bad Mount Buffalo Hill road, I happen to be a large property owner on that road.
No, I didn't get along with it, but we just, what's zoning going to do?
Thank you. Or a washing machine, they call Nate, S and S, all of them do. We all use Buffalo Road to our benefit and then stab them in the back when it comes time to.
John Lipka? Okay. Okay.
But after listening to what you have today, and even more testimonials, in fact, what I envisioned happened when you zoned was basically creating a gay community where people with money aren't afraid to move here and build 300, 400, 500, 1,000 dollar homes. And that happens because they're not worried about the trailers that are actually there. Right now, you never know, one of those trailers is going to come in or Buffalo Hill's going to appear. You know, those things that people with money don't want because their homes are investment, they're worried about it. I hear that now, I've been here 10, 20 years about some trailer somewhere. And relatives might be concerned with that. So I, I see zoning as actually creating, turning Caroline into what we think we're saving, what we already have.
The term is gentrification.
It's going to, it's going to turn into, you know, an expensive place to move. A lot of beautiful homes, there was a friend of mine who was not on that property, he was from Delaware County. They came out of New York City, chucked up all the farms, 4 acres of flats and built $300,000 homes. And the last time I talked to him, he said, "You're tearing down those $300,000 homes and building $90,000 homes." It worries me that if you zone this, you zone out the people who would live in a trailer or in a small home. And they, they buy up these farms, you want to keep the farms here, they got to make money. I've been telling you this, not necessarily this board, but the board for how long have I been around here? For 20 years, that's it. What do we do, what do we do? We're going to have, we're going to get together and have a committee, right? What's the answer? I have the answer for you, we need to organize this state and feed this state. Get, with all the connections we have with Cornell and the people in the food and that connection to restaurants and cities, look, look at all the people in the state. We can feed them if we could organize that. It's happening in Pennsylvania, they've already done that with the beef farms. Where they're, they're connected with the cities and doing these restaurants. That's what we need to do, if you want those farms to stay here and to grow here, they're going to make money. We just kind of struggle along, don't we guys? Okay, what are we doing now? I'm not going to do it, they had to just pull about it, I just, I just found a whole defense. Remember that thing, well, how, what happened to my cows? They left in December, there's nothing, I believe, I took out two fence poles, something scared them, it was a big hole. So I am against zoning now because of the education I got from these people.
No, it's, it's Ellen Harrison. All right, so, thank you Tony, Ellen Harrison?
Hi. Um, I very much appreciate the passion this year and a number of very thoughtful remarks. I thought, I don't really know how the current draft deals with the elderly housing thing, but I think that's critically important, I think that's great. And I don't really know how it deals with it, and it should, it will. Um, I have to say it takes courage to stand up in front of a relatively, let's say vocal and somewhat hostile crowd. I was pretty offended by the person who insulted me because I was wearing a mask.
Thank you.
It didn't feel like a joke, I'm elderly and I'm at risk, so that was pretty annoying.
And they also was insulting people who live on Buffalo Road.
Okay. So, while I appreciate all this passion, if any of you have ever, you know, done a review of something, you bought a product and it was crappy and you write a review, negative reviews, you write, when it was pretty good, you don't bother saying anything. So I want to say that you all have been marvelously vocal and that's your right and you should be. But I don't believe you represent the majority of the town. And for you, for you to assert that is not based on knowledge, it's based on your opinions.
That's for a hand count.
We are not interrupting any speakers and I would say the same for anyone, no matter what their view is, thank you.
Thank you. So in terms of a hand count here, well, that's pretty clear. But most of us who are in favor of zoning are intimidated by the presence of these people, of all of you who are somewhat hostile and interrupting, that's not polite, it's not the way to operate. The town, the way the law works in the state, we have not agreed with referendums. In Carolina, you vote on everything, here you don't. And it's up to the town board to pass or not pass zoning. It is not up to the town board to say, here's a referendum for all the citizens, that's not, it's not the way, be quiet. That's not the way it goes. So, I believe that in fact, a majority of the town residents would be in favor, you believe that they would be against it. The role of the town board is to weigh what they hear. And I would say the role of the town board is not just to listen to those of us who live here today or have lived here for generations. I think the role of the town board, and I was on a town board elsewhere, I've worked on land use issues for 50-plus years. I'm not stupid when it comes to this.
Where?
Uh, the town of Ithaca, I've been on the review board here in the Carolin town. And I previously lived over, how many years ago? 38 years ago in Connecticut, so, oh, that explains it. Um, okay, I'm not going to answer you.
Yeah, exactly.
It seems to me that the responsibility of the town board is not just to those who live here today. I think the responsibility, especially when it comes to land use issues, is looking far into the future. And I believe that we are at a time when decisions about the way land is used need to be made thinking about that future. Steve Kress spoke about sort of natural resource issues. I understood that there is an issue with stream belt for this person back there. The reality is, if we expect our streams to function, we can't build up to the edge of the stream. We have to preserve a riparian buffer, you have to. And the fact that there's been construction in the past, okay, we have to deal with that. But we should not be constructing there as we go forward. We're protecting drinking water, but even we're just protecting fishing and health of aquatic life. You can't do it by paving up to the edge of the stream this way. I am currently on the Caroline Review Board. And I was put in a position that was impossible. According to the law, it says I've been only voting in favor of something if it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. There was a proposal before us that was not consistent with the comprehensive plan. I couldn't vote for it. And on the other hand, my hands been, were tied because this use had every right to be there because without zoning, any use can go anywhere. And somebody said it's selfish to be looking out for my property. I don't believe that, I think we all look out for our self-interest, that's how we operate. And frankly, I would not be happy if there was a go-kart track next to my property. It would be noisy and it would completely interfere with my enjoyment and the wildlife values of my property. And as it is currently with no zoning, anything can go anywhere. Somebody else, be quiet. Somebody also said, somebody also said, state and federal law takes care of it all, as I say. I've worked on land use issues in New York State for 35 years. And there are federal rules, there are some state rules, they do not do everything by any means. And not only that, the farmers, basically, the town does not regulate farming. It's the state level that regulates farming, it's a right to farm community. So I'm a little bewildered as to why people think of farming would be so constrained. I wanted to also address a young man who spoke, I thought, very politely, despite his disclaimer, in terms of data and preserving farmland. I would say from my perspective, again, if we're looking in the future, our area is going to become increasingly valuable as farming. We have water, we don't have fires, California's going down, the state of Arizona, they, they don't have water, things are going bad. So I would foresee in the future greater demand for agriculture here. We can't legislate that some of the farming.
Let her go Mark, she's on your side.
But we can.
Have a seat.
But everybody else, we can't legislate farming, but we can preserve land. And I think that the opportunity we have now to cluster developments, not saying, no development on farmland.
Ellen, your turn.
Okay, I would just say, I think it's their responsibility to look forward to it. And I think we need to employ zoning laws to look into it.
Thank you Ellen. Robert Kenyon?
Bobby Kenyon?
Robert Kenyon, Bob Kenyon? Or Corinne? Mary?
What's her name?
Kenyon.
Kenyon?
Mary Kenyon?
No, okay, hi, yeah, okay, thank you. Edie Spalding?
I've got, you know, a couple different things to add to this, but I've been in the town of Caroline for many moons. My family's been here for lots of months, they live in Cooperdale and Caroline Center. My husband was a town supervisor many moons ago and he was totally against zoning. And I know, you know, he was supervisor and councilman for a total of 10 years. And, you know, that was feeling, it was a discussion and I remember that there was some kind of a process where New York State would give the town money to lay in for that zoning and they did not. Majority of the residents at that time was totally against it. I myself am totally against it as well. I'm not one that likes to do public speaking, so, you know, I put together some of these thoughts and some of them are going to be in and they're skipping over. I would like to know, you know, how the zoning would affect the, the town values and that sort of thing. And then jumping to the comprehensive plan. I completed it, I completed both of them and I think that whoever, I don't know who all was on to it, they posed the questions and the potential answers to have it go in their direction. And that's a direction that I didn't, didn't agree with then, I don't agree with now, neither did my husband when it was put in place in 2006. I remember telling Irene that I thought that the plan was a total joke. I still feel the same because it doesn't target my thoughts. What I'd rather see the town work on is, you know, take that money that they're using for the zoning and the zoning officer to create internet so that people that live out in the hinterlands can have access to the internet. Because I know that driving around in my car, there are a lot of places where there's no access. Because I know that driving around in my car, there are a lot of places where there's no access. Oh, I know. There's, there's a lot of them. And, you know, and I think the town should be, you know, targeting some of those areas. Get those people so they can have access to the internet.
So I can use my cellphone like everybody else in the world?
That's where I live on Ellis Hollow Road. I don't have access to cable. It doesn't come up that far. And you would think, you're living on Ellis Hollow Road, yes, I would have access. No, there's, there's no access. I have, you know, a phone. From here, you know, I was told the only way to get fast access was to move down to Sliderville. I don't wanna move to Sliderville. I wanna move where I live. And then in regards to, uh, to zoning, back a number of years ago, I had a purchase offer, uh, I represented the seller and we had a purchase offer on a piece of property. There was zoning in the town of Dryden. The neighbors come out in force. They didn't want this property being sold to, for the purpose that, that people wanted to buy it for. It got shot down. All those people that, that went and protested it, they're gone. Seller, uh, didn't, wasn't able to sell the property for the amount that we had on the purchase offer that point in time. I don't know if they still have the purchase offer that I probably talked about at this point in time. Uh, but it ended up being sold to another person and they ended up making money onto the property. Not the guy that had owned the property and they'd owned it for lots of years. That is one point that I really wanted to get across, is the ambulance service. You know, it's sad that we live out here and we don't have, you know, the ambulance service. I volunteered on it for many years. I drove the ambulance. I was EMT. And there's people that need it, that, you know, by the time the ambulance gets out there, they could be dead. And in order to get it back happening again, somebody's gonna have to have a tragic accident to get it brought back. Those are the things I wanted to say.
Thank you, Edie. Uh, let's see. Didn't Anna Gibson already spoke? Mariana Morse?
No.
No, okay. Steve Crispell? Is that a no?
Yeah, I heard a no.
Uh, Dave Mesh?
He's not here.
Okay. Doug Dare? Is Doug here?
Doug?
Doug Dare?
Doug Dare?
He's not here, okay. Okay. Uh, Kim Wetzel?
Well, I appreciate all you people hanging in there and I'm sure you didn't wait all this time just to hear me talk. But, but, I'm a little bit slighted. My copy of their proposed regulations is only a hundred and twenty-five pages. And for your interest, so I must've gotten early cocked. I can't see a single thing that this zoning is gonna do for the town of Caroline except cause a lot of people to grieve and, and it's gonna satisfy who? It only has moved along this far because they haven't been listening. They haven't been... When I go to these meetings, I see a lot of the same faces. We had a speaker that spoke a little earlier that said, whoa, there's a whole bunch of people that are really in favor. Well, where are they?
Yeah.
Can't they take a little time out of their Saturday and show up? Exercise their right and talk about what's concerning them? I've lived in the area of this part of the state for seventy-eight years. I grew up on a family farm in the town of Dryden, German Cross Road, still own the property. Own property in Lansing. But more importantly, I'm a significant property owner for somebody that's not involved in agriculture here in the town of Caroline. I have some unique things to my property. I believe that I'm the owner, I, I know I'm the owner of, but I believe I have the only active airport and airstrip. Not that it's a big deal, but it affords me a recreation that I can enjoy. When I've been to these meetings and I talk to people, there's predominantly been people there that are fence, or, excuse me, opposed to zoning. It was good to hear. We had a few people that had enough gumption to stand up and I, I'm glad to hear their concerns. So I, I wanna acknowledge those people that are concerned enough about it and made the effort to come and sit through all this. I, as a businessperson, think that we don't need zoning. As a property owner, I don't think we need zoning. Town's got along fine for a lot of years without zoning. It's surprising to me that there's this much, that you people are, the tenacity of you people that appear to be and are reluctant to articulate what your position is, and I'm talking to town board members. And I recognize that maybe you might not wanna, you know, might not wanna articulate it. With the nature of the crowd, there's a lot of people here that are against it. I'm refreshed to see that we have a board member that's been exclusively, in my opinion, on video, is here in person. That's a good thing. There are some other town board members, a couple of them, three of them that I see here, um, that have been here all along. So that, that's a good thing. So, I would like to think that there, that maybe this would be put to rest, but I recognize that it's not because we can only talk about it. These are the people that are gonna vote on it. And they don't, they can listen politely and they do what they wanna do. As a significant property owner and a business owner in the community, with three businesses, uh, it's kind of refreshing to see three young men here that have worked for me through the years, um, that are either retired or are retiring, but I'm still hanging in there and be doing it for just a little while longer.
Thanks, Kim. Emily Adams?
Um, I didn't prepare something because I just wanted to come in and mostly listen as well. I'm Emily Adams. I was born here in Brooktondale. I went to Caroline School. I lived around the corner from Darla. I'm now on the cemetery board with Cal and, um, where my other, John Carson. And I really love this community, but I'm not a homeowner. I'm not a farmer. I live on less than an acre with my dad. But we built something like they were talking about here. It was fine. I don't know why zoning would stop that in the future. What my main feeling is and I wanna share is that I'm, I'm really sad to see how much people are angry about this when I don't think we actually have that different, a desire. I mean, I heard Terry, right? Tivelli? Tony? Tony? About the, the desire not to have rich people come from New York City and buy up a piece of land and change the character of what we love here. And that's like, that's totally what I am thinking as well. So... But how, you know, so it feels like to me, like, like we need to find more ways to get people with that same end goal sitting down together and talking about, how do we write something or not, or do something different than zoning? If zoning isn't the way that you could protect that stuff, how can we best protect the character of the town? And I admit, I haven't read a hundred and thirty-five pages. I don't have time. I would love to see it get down to, a proposal come down to something manageable and bite-sized that I could read and then go, okay, you know, does this address the issues of the farmers? Does it address elderly issues? Does it address all these things? You know, then I would like to have an opinion. In the meantime, I'd like to feel like I'm welcome at a group and that they're friendly people who would sit down with me and talk about it. Because I have to say, I was, you know, I was shaken. I was not gonna come to this at all. And I know that most people in this town who are not, you know, don't have the no zoning signs in the front of their houses are more scared than I am and didn't come at all. And that doesn't, that doesn't help, does it?
There's been no violence. There's been so much...
That's okay.
But verbally, I mean, when somebody says, you don't want zoning, then leave? How, how would, how would you like someone to say to you, well, you don't like the color of my shoes, well, you can leave? It's pretty, it's pretty hard. I mean, this is my only home. You know, and just because I don't have a farm and I don't have many acres, doesn't mean I wanna just go.
Said you didn't even own a house, right?
I'm, I'm renting from my dad, you know, so it's... But I'd like to see us get along and talk about how to meet everybody's needs. And, you know, not put anybody down. You know, I'm wearing my mask, John. I'm sorry. I love you as friends. We're on the board together for the cemetery, but that hurt. That really hurt. I'm trying to protect my dad. You know, and so, I think that's all I have. And I appreciate that the board is still hanging in there and I don't doubt your intentions at all. And I don't think you're doing it for the glory. I mean, who would do this for the glory? And you're not doing it for the money, because I know, I've seen the salary. It's, you know, it's like nothing. So you're doing it because you care about preserving what we all wanna preserve and we just gotta find the right way to do it.
Thank you, Emily. Chad Tebbel?
Uh, second generation resident here. My son's a third. First off, I'd like to thank some of the people. Kelly Martin, Mr. Phoenix back there. They served our country once before and they're standing up, doing it again. Thank you. Thank you very much, guys. And I just come up here, I'm shooting from the hip. I don't really say much. I'm feeding off what everybody said. Whether you're for or opposed, thanks for coming, speaking your minds, you know. But, uh, John and Lori, they say they got property and, you know, the recreational use. I grew up there with my kids on their property. We all get along. This town, we gotta listen to what the people are saying. You guys, it's in your hands. Listen to us, please. Come on. We're not all here because we got other stuff to do. We're here to talk to you. Let you guys see what we feel, what we want, where our hearts are. This is our town too. Do the right thing. And, and the one guy back there who said stuff about, you know, the bird watching and all of that. I get all that. I get it. The water, everything. But Bruce Murray, Tom R. Pony, Robbie Compton, we all share a bunch of land. It's a thousand acres probably between all of us and I steward a piece. And we're, we're stewarding that land for the birds, for the safety of water and everything. And all of it, if this zoning goes through and, and we say to hell with it, we want out of here, that's gonna get split up into pieces. And there's gonna be houses after houses after houses. It's a side hill with beautiful views. And it won't be what you want. And it'll bring septic systems in. It'll be growth. It'll be roads. It won't be. We are taking care of that land. Right behind here, when you leave here, look at that hill. There's not a house on it. That's the property. We all live right there. We are preserving that. There's a thousand acres between all of us. And it'll be gone. Mark my word. Take us out of here, it'll be gone. And that's on you folks.
Thing is, they make you a town criminal or they make you leave your home.
Please listen to us. Thank you.
You're actually, you're next.
You're, you're next.
Oh, I'm, oh, okay.
Thank you, Chad. Rebecca Schellenbach?
You are actually next.
Okay. Sorry, I was just saying I have to go because I'm late for the basketball game at Caroline Elementary. So, I'm Rebecca. Um, I've lived here sixteen years. I live up on the top of Bald Hill where most recently a cell phone tower went up across from my house. But hundreds of years ago, the Haudenosaunee and the Delaware people came together because that's where the Delaware watershed and the Lake Ontario watershed come together right at the top of my driveway. Like my neighbor Marielle's, I grow about fifty percent of my food for my family because we're low income and because I believe in self-reliance and hard work. I'm here to offer a zoning curious, as opposed to a zoning reactive or zoning triggered point of view. I'm here because I'm in favor of local community self-governance. I believe in small d democracy and the possibility of collective self-determination. I'd like to talk about what we're really talking about when we talk about zoning. When we argue about zoning, we're arguing about conflicting definitions of the word freedom. We're talking about the relationship between individual freedom and collective well-being. When we talk about zoning, we're talking about money. We're talking about whether money should be the ultimate arbiter of what's possible in the future of our home. We're talking about what home means to each of us. And we're talking uneasily about changes that are bearing down on our home. We're talking about whether local communities have a right to have a say in the ways that economic forces that are much larger than us churn through our communities and leave them unrecognizable to the people who call them home, all of us. We're talking about taking responsibility for our home in the face of those forces. And we're talking about whether our home is more than a place for corporations or individuals to extract profit from. When we argue about zoning and local government regulations, we're talking about the concept of democratic self-governance, government itself and whose government it is. We're also talking about the common good, which is another ideal like government and government regulations that has been delegitimized and undermined for decades in our country. So we're talking about that underlying conversation as well. Changes and people are coming to Caroline, whether we like it or not. More and more people want to move to our little corner of paradise. Huge economic patterns and forces are coming for us. Saying they're not won't make it so. Huge economic forces, huge patterns. If we don't work together, money and the interests of money will be what determines our town's future. Sometimes that might serve our narrow self-interests and sometimes in ways that will be ruinous to the place we all call home, it will not. In the absence of local cooperation, the default standard of decision-making for the home we all share will be what money wants. Our best defense is each other and the love that we share for this place. So, I say as a zoning curious person, if zoning could give voice to that, to what we all love, then that's a tool we should absolutely use. We should use every tool at our disposal. And I also say as a zoning curious person, zoning could be a message to all the people who are lining up at our doorsteps to move here, to become our new neighbors, that says, when you move to Caroline, you move to a real place, an actual place. We're not just another generic corporate strip, bland McMansion-filled suburb that's heading our way. We're not just a collection of disparate housing developments. In Caroline, we care about this place. So if you want to come here, you have to care about this place too. You have to agree to some basic rules that we've set together. That's what zoning could be. It could be deeply conservative. Deeply conservative in the best sense of that word. A way for all of us in our town to come together across our differences, which are significant, and articulate what we value and what we love about this place. Surely we could unite behind what we love as readily as we unite behind what we fear. Finally, I will say that when I hear fear mongering and repeated reactive misinformation and disinformation and misreadings presented as facts on the part of my anti-zoning neighbors, they don't come across to me as someone who's curious and independent and undecided about this issue as good arguments. They, they don't come across as good faith arguments at all. They come across as reactive triggering, actually. On the other hand, I'm grateful to the board because I see... On the other hand, I'm grateful to the board, because I see good faith efforts here. And I thank you for believing in the concept of self-governance. I thank you for believing in Caroline, in your neighbors, even when they don't believe in you, and in the ideal of the common good. And I hope that we can all unite behind those bigger values. Thank you.
Joe Wiki.
Well, I apologize for being here late. We had another fundraiser in Speedsville, so it was still busy. I wasn't going to speak until this gentleman said something. Probably should listen to that, yeah. My name is Joe Wiki. I've been in Speedsville since 1956. Really bustling town, if anybody's been there. I'm a life member of the Speedsville Volunteer Fire Company. I've been involved with the other area fire companies, Ruptondale, Siderville, work alongside many of our proud, independent, freedom-loving community members. For my comments today, I decided to concentrate on just pages eleven through fifteen from this one hundred and thirty-two-page labyrinth of proposed draft zoning draft. Here are the numbers I discovered regarding the categorized areas. There are one hundred and eighteen areas that fall under the P. That is areas that are permitted use, not requiring enter review board permit, approval, or review. However, a building permit from the code enforcement officer or approval from other agencies may be required. This is in place now. Let's go to the other codes. SPR. This is what they are proposing. SPR. A use, a use subject to the site plan review and approval of the review board. There are seventy of those. SUP. Special use permit review and approval by the review board required. There are fifty-two of those. ASPR. Agregated site plan review and approval by the review board required pursuant to Article Six, N C six dot ten. There are twenty-seven of those. AS, SPR slash SUP. There are both site plan review and special use permit review and approved by the review board are required. None of these are identified. In other words, you're gonna get two reviews on top of everything else. So let's go to the completely prohibited use. One hundred and eighteen. That brings you to total law review or prohibited use categorized areas, two hundred and sixty-seven. Due to three minutes' time constraint, the following list, and I'm gonna talk now, of prohibited, prohibited use areas only that the board are determined not to be vital in the Town of Caroline in our future. Would any of these affect you, your children's, your friends, your dreams? I'm thinking of my effect, my, my family. In my opinion, either just a couple of them now, in my opinion, many of these would become a welcome and needed asset to Town of Caroline. Let's start. Health, medical, clinical laboratory. Nursing home. Botanarian. Bank. Camp ground. Camping units. Retreat center. Church of religious use. Car wash. Daycare. Daycare center. Brewery. Winery. Sidery. Distillery. Sawmill on a farm. Commercial pen. Auction house. Convenience store. Event facility. Wedding venue. Food and beverage. Funeral home. Commercial indoor recreation. Private school. The list keeps going on and on. So in conclusion, I put something up here, I think it, a lot of you have been repeating it on Facebook. It's by Madeline Albright. Something to think about. It's like, "Tail is wagging the dog. The temptation is powerful to close our eyes and wait for the worst to pass. The history tells us that for freedom to survive, it must be defended, and that if lies are to stop, they must be exposed." Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Kathy Mix.
I didn't come here today to talk. I came here to listen, but I cannot been able to make it through the last couple weeks due to Caroline's propagation. I wanna thank the board for listening there, to see what's going on here today and being brave enough to come and listen. And I hope you're actively listening. I am with a big heart today, hearing the support for, for ambulance service out here. This has been a passion of mine for years. And I have sat in front of the board after the ambulance goes and presented proposal after proposal on how we could get it back in hand. But to see it finally coming from people, that's, that, that makes me feel good. However, what frustrates me with all the zoning is I did go proposal after proposal to talk to the guys. And to see us go back into the zoning frame of mind again, do I think we need regulations? Well, maybe there might be some regulations that need to be, do I think it needs to be zoning, no? I think health and safety is the biggest concern we have out here. I, I mimic the thing about the trail, and how are you gonna police that? How are people gonna be safe on there? I've said that for years. You have no ambulance service out here. What if somebody gets hurt out there? Or worse, gets murdered? We don't have police out here. How many years was I on the ambulance? And we had to wait before we could go into a house to help somebody because it was a potential dangerous situation. And we had to wait for them to come to comfort, 'cause we don't have our own police work here. Those are things I'd like to see us focus on, as opposed to telling me, as a farmer, now that we're deciding that we're up in the weeds and we need to retire, and I'm on that seventy-nine corridor that's marked as farmland, that I'm gonna have regulations put on me that I can't sell that in my retirement. We are a right-to-farm community by New York State law, but you're making it so I don't have the right to retire. And I'm sorry, that makes me very sad. The, the amount of time and energy I've afforded to this town, I've met with the town board, I've been on committees with the town board, and it makes me very sad that we can't get simple life safety stuff out here in Town of Caroline. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, that, um... Okay, Bill Case.
When you guys make this so we don't love the land that we love, we're gonna move. And we're gonna sell our property, as much as we can of it, and as many lots as we can. And you're gonna get, I believe, what you're looking for, all your houses that you can get in here, so you have a big bankroll to play with. That's what I'm starting to think that you're looking for. I love this property. I've been here my whole life, and I know that you're only listening to about five or six people out here just spoke. There's nobody else that you've heard here. And I hope you're listening to this, 'cause that's what it's gonna happen. And I just can't stand to be here any longer and listen to what you're trying to do with our property. I can't believe that you can't, if you had to make a zoning, why couldn't you make a zoning? It's three pages, instead of sticking everything in there possible that would ruin the lives of everybody, just because you wanna control everything. So that's really all I have to say. And I cannot stand here any longer to listen to what's coming, because it's not being heard.
I've said it, I, we are listening today.
You are now listening.
And the, the draft law is a draft law that is under construction by the zoning commission.
Everybody's land sold, and everybody, we've gone and loves this town.
Past this zoning, I'm birdling every tree in my yard, and that's just for starters.
You wanna speak?
Do you wanna speak? I did sign the list to speak, because I had...
We'll put your name on the list.
That's okay. My name is Chris Schreiber. My husband is Richard Schreiber. He's lived in Town of Caroline for seventy-five of his eighty years. He would not passively come and sit here for this time. But I, something caught my ear when we first started this meeting, that, Mr. Supervisor, you said, it may have escaped most people's recognition, but you said, "We are committed to this plan, sir, lady, lady, sir." And whoever's not here, I forget his name. I, I, I ask you that you did listen to what people were saying today. Who gave you the authority to be committed to this plan? Not us. Not us.
Thank you, Ms. Schreiber. Bruce Murray?
Now, Bruce Murray, I, uh, Joe, that table has changed some, so you wanna look at it again. I'm on the zoning commission, that's why I wanted to bring, I brought this up at the last public meeting, that the use table is, is now pretty much completed. It'll probably be on zoning commission website. Everybody should look at it. It tells you exactly how it'll affect you. But you should also look at how it'll affect any other piece of property you're thinking about, or your neighbors. The dimension table is also out. It'll tell you what size land you definitely have, what size buildings you can build, so on and so forth. Look at it, understand it. There'll be a meeting at the end of April with the zoning commission, so that you can question, come up with questions you need to come up with. And the other thing that I would like to ask the town board, what I have asked multiple times since I've been on the zoning commission. One person resigns. I asked if we should replace them. They said, "No." Two people resigned. I asked if they should be replaced. I was told, "No." Well, three-quarters of another person has resigned, and he's stated that he'd keep his foot in the door to be able to vote at a crucial time. And to me, that was just totally ridiculous. And so there's basically three people that are off a nine-board commission. And in the last meeting, at the end of the meeting, we were asked if the board would interject or think about replacing some people, possibly whoever they pick. But Mark said he thought it was going the way it should go with the people that we have, which is now only five and a quarter. So we did have nine, I believe, as a zoning commission member, that we should have a full board and somebody else on the board to help us do the work.
Surprise, surprise. How can you look at it on the website if you ain't got internet? That's what I wanna know.
You can go to the town hall, and the little library reading room has computers, and you can get online there.
Not everybody's computer literate. I'm not. I'm old-school. Send it in paper. Send it in the mail. I wanna read it. That's what I want. I wanna be able to look at it and read it right in my hands.
Yep. So, Kim, or, there was a hand back there first. Yeah, do you wanna speak? Yes, go ahead.
I didn't sign up for anything, and I'm not a public speaker whatsoever, but I have gone to the board meetings and the zoning committee meetings quite regularly lately. And I don't know much about politics. I'm definitely not computer savvy. I understand that. That's why I go in person, 'cause I can't, that's how I comprehend, is if I face-to-face with people, I learn better that way. What I don't understand, and I guess this is just a question I'm throwing out there, is in a court system, like, if someone's convicted of something, they go in front of the jury. The jury, the majority rules. If it's not a hundred percent in favor of that, then it's dismissed, and they go back into whatever. When, when I've gone to the zoning committee meetings, there's been times, for example, on the twenty-second of this month, like we've got a meeting, and one of the committee members, they were discussing, 'cause they're, they're going over the proposed zoning thing, and I appreciate all the time that they're taking to do that. One of the things on that particular night was daycare. They were questioning, should daycare be in the ag community? And one person was opposed to it. The rest of them agreed. So it was passed that daycares, no, we don't like daycares, you know, we, we don't want them in the ag community. Then, a few minutes later, a couple lines down, they went into nursing homes. And should nursing homes be in the ag community? Well, again, people are kinda, eh, I don't know, you know. One lady spoke up and said, and, and, don't quote me on any of this, mother, mother-in-law, somebody in their family anyways, is elderly and would love, at being in a nursing home, to be able to look outside and see the beautiful landscape and the rural community. So they proposed, they said, eh, nursing homes seem great in the ag community. Well, then, said person who decided that they wanted daycare, but they were voted down on that, like, oh, it's a bad thing, all of a sudden, they spoke up and said, "Well, if there's nursing homes, it would make sense that there's daycare." Which makes sense, you know, you, you, you gotta take care of your young and your old. And I just, where is it? It, it, it seemed to me, I don't wanna say hypocritical, but it seemed to me like one person's opinion, and, and, and that's, that's what zoning is. I, I don't know a lot about it, but what I'm seeing in zoning is if you want, I wanna build a house this big, and I wanna care. Some other person comes in, they wanna build a house a little smaller, maybe a little bigger. They go in front of the zoning commission, if we have one, and they said, "Well, we want this, and we want our garage in the back," or maybe they want it right up next to the road. And then it's a matter of the zoning, the person that day, do they feel, is it, in their opinion, do they feel that that's acceptable? Do they feel that that is appropriate? Like, who, who decides if my house is purple, who decides if it's blue? It, it, it comes down to, I feel like a governance of what I feel versus what you feel. And it, it's just an all matter of opinion. And honestly, I'm not a farmer. My parents were farmers. We owned a lot of land in Sterling, where I grew up, far from here. But these farmers, they have these, this property in their, in their families for generations. Chris Bell's over a hundred and fifty years. That, that's impressive. They haven't sold yet. Where, where are they gonna sell? Who's gonna come in and take their...
People have tried, and we refused.
Yeah, like, exactly. They are the ones who are keeping the property the way they want it, the way that you guys enjoy looking at it, the way the rural community enjoys looking at it. And I just, I don't personally understand where the majority is. I mean, I, I see a group, I, I don't even know how many people are here today, over fifty, and there's four of you, you know, and, and on the zoning committee, there's another four or five... And, and on the zoning committee, there's another floor five, you know. And I just, I, eight people are, are in charge of what we do, you know, to be on property. I mean, it, it's America, it's freedom. It's why we live here, you know, so we are free to do what we want. I'm not saying let's put in a junkyard, you know, but I think that if a junkyard wanted to pop in or a, I don't know, that lady, one of these ladies said something about a toxic something. You know, I, I'm sure as a town we could, at that time, fight that, you know. I, I don't think now is the time.
Okay, thank you. Charlotte, right?
Charlotte.
Charlotte, yeah.
Thank you.
Mark, I'd like to do one more thing. I just wanted to express to the board that one of the reasons for not being appointed somebody was people wouldn't be able to catch up. You know, we've done a lot of work, we have, spent a year, except for those charts, page eighteen is a hundred and thirty-five page law. So there's a lot more to go through. So we would use help. The other thing is, when I joined the zoning commission, I was handed this piece of paper, adopting zoning for the first time, this title, printout by the state. Everybody who knows me knows I'm a right and wrong kind of person, and what I read, I take to heart. One of the things at the end of this, that's page two of this document, says, creation of zoning commission, the steps. At the bottom, it says, this publication discusses each of the steps in some detail. But the Department of State strongly recommends early consultation with a municipal attorney or legal advice relating to adopting zoning regulation. I asked multiple times to have our town lawyer talk to the zoning commission before we even got to the planning department with the planner. And I was told no. Later on down the road, when it came up that we could finally have meetings open to the public with the zoning commission and the people on the zoning commission, it's fine if you have a health problem, you can't be there. But I said, it's going to be awfully strange that people are going to, have been asking for people to be here and now all of a sudden, nobody from the zoning commission is going to be here. So I personally asked Tim Murray to call the town lawyer and ask him if it was, if we should handle it this way or how we should handle it. And I was told they've already contacted him, we were doing everything legal. So I called the town lawyer. The town lawyer said to me, he used every word other than ethical, stating that this isn't the way it should be done. His exact words to me were, that his opinion was that we should start with a few zones because zoning will be amended and changed all the way down the road. And I do believe that that's probably the reason that the town board does not want the town lawyer to talk to the zoning commission.
Kim Case.
Hi, I'm Kim Case.
Yeah, we need to wrap, so. Kim, did you wish to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm a lifetime resident of the town of Caroline. I've been looking at the website for the discussion on zoning in the town. I've been responding to a few of the people on there that think that zoning is going to make it so that somebody shooting on the hill will cease. They think that somebody's going to put a pig farm in next to their home, they live in the heart of Brooktondale. These things are not going to save them, zoning is not going to save them from these things. People on the hill can shoot if they want to shoot. She says they're doing fireworks every day from such and such to such and such. They're shooting, her neighbors were shooting. I said, where, where are these neighbors? I don't know, they live someplace in the hills. This is not going to save her. And I talk to these people all the time. They don't know what zoning is, nor do they know what it will do for them or not. So I think we need to be more clear. And the zoning thing is too long. I don't understand it. Nobody understands it. It's crazy. It's just not, it's not user-friendly. That's where I see it.
Okay, thank you, Kim. So I guess, I would like to, it's, it's been a long afternoon, I'd like to close the meeting now. And, so, did we have another speaker that wanted to speak?
Can I say?
Okay.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Working in the city, I took a job because I no longer can do what I'm passionate about, it's a physical business. But I'm still in the same field. I worked for the building division. You guys hate it, right? Everybody hates the building code enforcement office. I took that job because I liked building. There's a few things that I've done since the whole zoning thing came about. I foiled a couple files. I spoke to someone today and I'm highly, highly upset with the town board after my conversation. I foiled a file for the Brookton market. I got the last two pages of the paper document. Kevin McMahon cited them for the handrail on the second floor apartment. The next paper, the very last paper, is the building permit they applied for. Then I spoke to an old building code enforcement officer and he says there's a digital file. I was never told about the digital file when I asked him to foil in the file. He said that there was multiple communications back and forth between him and the owner of the Brookton market. He doesn't know what happened, but I can tell you that in the state of New York, there's like your twelve oh three, it's a state law. There's twelve things that aren't, that you don't need a building permit for. Kind of sucks, there's only twelve things. You do need a building permit for a tent. Okay? And it's basic safety, public safety. You can't have anything combustible inside. You can't have propane tanks right next to it. You have to have egress lighting. Egress lighting comes on when the power goes out. You put the sides on the tent, power goes out at night, there's fire, panic, you don't know where to go. Come on, it's public safety. I'm pretty positive the old building code enforcement officer brought this up to the town board. Can't say for sure because, you know, he wouldn't tell. But he was pretty stickler on code. I know he made Steve Crispell hit one out at Lurchwood Farms to sell flowers, tent permit. Okay? So, you know, one other thing that I'm going to say about the whole Brookton market.
Is it, are you speaking about the zoning issue in Caroline?
I'm just speaking about what happens in Caroline in general.
That is not what's going to happen.
That is, this is not appropriate. If you want to come speak to me about the code office, you may.
I'll be here all night. Things get overlooked unless it's in their interest.
Thank you, Rob. So, before anyone else leaves, I really want to thank everybody for coming today. People are trickling out, I do want to express my gratitude. We have been listening. What I have heard is concerns about your property subdivision, about homogenization of Caroline, about your property values. I appreciate so much the statements that were made about neighborliness in Caroline. I think we all feel that. I feel that I love my neighbors, we're all different, and I don't want to change that either. So I do think that zoning is worth a good look. We haven't gotten the first document from the zoning commission. And so I've, I've definitely felt the emotional response today. I've taken assiduous notes and these are things that we will be paying attention to as, as we consider the drafts that are produced. We still don't have that first, and the zoning commission has been attentive to all the questions and concerns that you have brought forward and that has been helpful. So I, I do, I do want to acknowledge that, I do want to say that, that we are listening. And I, I really appreciate the sentiment that we're all, we all really want the same thing for Caroline. So I'm, I'm, I want to reiterate, the, the final draft is under construction and will be produced sometime relatively soon. And I want to, I want to give my board members a chance to, to hear, to say what they've heard from you as well, so.
Sure. Mark, Mark, I give up my right to speak, but I want to say, listening to this today, to me, it's lack of communication with the board to the community. You may talk to certain communities, but you're not talking to all of the communities. And therefore, I think this is why a lot of this got started, was because there were people, a third of the community didn't even know that there was a zoning board going on. And why is that? You're not communicating, the board is not communicating.
So, yeah, I'm sorry about that, Beth. I, I, I do want to explain, I sent out three newsletters last year that advertised that. But I want to, also want to emphasize, the, the reason, the reason for the zoning commission process is explicitly for public engagement. And that's what's happening now. And it's ongoing, it's happening right now, it's ongoing, and it's an educational experience for all of us. So I, I appreciate what you're saying and I, I think it's happening.
So I hope that in the future, because I don't think we meet here, there's been originally, I know we were in a pandemic when it got started, but if, if there had been communication, we'd be happy and here we are right now.
Okay, yep, thank you, so.
So I, um. I don't, I don't need to speak, but I'm, I'm choosing to speak. We've been here for three-plus hours. There were other meetings that were equivalently long and that's a good thing, because it means that we're listening to people. I personally, I'm Catherine, by the way, for those of you who don't know me, I'm on board. I've been on the board for about a year. So please know that we all are coming at this from different perspectives and different time points and different timeframes and different embeddedness in the history of local process. And, and that's okay for people not to all recognize that, like, I don't take this personally. But I will just say, for those not familiar, that there was a significant amount of push that was required to have these meetings.
About you, and I thank.
I, yeah, I mean, I thank you. But I mean, I, so my, I, I don't need thanks, but I'm just sharing that to say that I feel compelled personally to, to share that when we do this and then I hear how we're not listening, I, I don't even really know how to respond to that. And I appreciate that there's a lot of emotion and I appreciate that there's a lot of anger and like, I consider it my job and my responsibility and my civic duty, I'm not going to cry, to lit, to, to, to take it and take whatever you all throw at us. That is my job.
Catherine, you need to answer questions, that's why everybody's so upset. Nobody knows. Nobody knows the answers to the things they're throwing to you, we need to know what the answer is.
So, so I, so I have heard a lot about zoning from the community. And I don't personally know exactly what zoning, whatever we decide zoning is. There is no universal definition of that word. Believe me, I, my husband can tell you, I've lost an enormous amount of sleep researching it for myself.
Ditto.
For myself, because it is important to me as someone who cares about this community and is trying to serve my community while I also have other things going on. It's important to me to learn about this for myself. And I too am struggling, along with all of you, to figure out what the word zoning means, what it meant earlier, what it means now, what it means in Caroline, what it means in New York City, what it means in, I mean, this is a process that we are all engaging in together. So the one thing I would just say is when there's a you versus us, us versus them, you're pushing this forward, you want this, I resent it. Because I know a lot of you, I'm privileged to know a lot of you, but I haven't had the good fortune of meeting all of you. And that also means that you don't know me. And because of COVID, hundred percent agree with everyone who's saying COVID has been a problem for public engagement. COVID has been a problem for lots of things. And the timing is regrettable. And that might be posted on Facebook and that might be misinterpreted and I don't care. Because I know for myself that I can use the word regrettable and decide that it means something and I'm going to take the brave step and not worry about that being taken out of context. So the apocalyptic view of zoning that I'm hearing, I mean, these are the things I've heard. Concern about housing insecurity, narcotics crushing dreams, favoring the elite, pitting neighbor against neighbor, negative effects forever, destroying everything we have worked for and ruining the lives of everybody. That sounds terrible and I don't support any of those things. So please know that for myself, I can only speak for myself, that I am not in support of policies that would put forth any of those horrendous things. And so we are trying. I appreciate that. We're trying to do the best we can to move forward in a way that makes sense. And that's all I have to say.
So my name is Kate Kelly McKenzie and some of you know me, a lot of you don't. And I'm pretty frustrated too, because I feel like a lot of people made a heck of a lot of assumptions about me and where I'm from and what I care about. So, and I'm not going to go over my personal history here. I'd be glad to talk to people, I have made efforts and reached out to people, saying, I'll meet you for coffee, come and talk to me, I'll go for a walk. I've been yelled at, I've been scolded, I've been called names. This is a friendly community. I've lived here since nineteen ninety-three, I live in the Hamlets. Thought I was going to give my whole personal thing, but one thing is, my mom came from a family community in Wyoming County and we had a family farm. So I'm really tired of you all going, oh, you don't know what a family farm is. Well, yeah, I do, actually, on Adams Road, worse than New York. So I think a big thing people are concerned about is being able to take care of their families and their land in a responsible way. And I think also people feel really taken aback, like, if we have zoning, it means you didn't do a good job. Guys have done a great job, farms have done great jobs. There are a lot of pressures that are coming in that we have to figure out how to deal with. Maybe in a different way, maybe zoning. I mean, we've been trying to do it with land use regulation, you know, with the, the subdivision law. And we're trying to figure out how to do this. And we're trying, everybody needs to think about, we're all in this together, we're trying to work together. And I'm not going to be moving back to Ithaca, I never lived there. I'm not going to be moving back to Cogga Heights, I don't want to live there. I chose to have a family here, I chose to have, make sure my kids were going to do chores, help new hay, learn how to work. I don't believe that zoning is the stealing of property rights, and I've heard that a lot. Zoning can be lots of different things. I am waiting for the zoning commission to present something to the town board so we can look at it and see what it is. I can't give answers because I don't, I don't have the thing in front of me to answer with. I could listen to you and hear your concerns, right? And I've been writing them down, it's not all that organized. A lot of it's, you know, how does this affect the farm? How can we support, support farmers? How can we get an ambulance? That was actually really key to me today. And also I just want to say, the town board is also trying to work on other stuff too. We're trying to do the internet stuff, we're trying to get the town board payment, we're trying to take care of the barns, you know? And I'm not in this for the power, that, that, really resent that, truthfully.
I said the answer thing because we thought you had the answers to the zoning. This is why people are here to ask you.
I'm here to listen to your concerns, but I don't have any answers, not yet. I'm here to listen to your concerns, but I don't have any answers, not yet.
One word that stood out very loudly for me was, this is a very, oh, what's my name? Cal Snow. This will have very consequential effects for the town. I think it needs to go slowly, methodically. I'm a very strong believer in popular sovereignty. By popular sovereignty, I do not mean populism, handing out, you know, candy canes and popsicles. But it is purely the consent of the governed. And I'm hearing a very strong opposition from the government. It was bought up, well, what about the, there might be a majority that, well, it's always been a struggle for me, what about the people that just don't seem to care? They don't show up, they don't have an opinion. I don't know, you, this matters to you, you showed up, and I hear you loud and clear. I cannot support what is coming out as a draft of zoning. It's, you know, it's being worked on, there's more work that needs to be done, but I think you are not giving your consent to what is being circulated as a draft. I hear you, I cannot support it as what we are seeing. Do we need zoning? Kate had shared with me what I thought was a very apt little bit. Zoning, are you against it? Are you for it? Am I for tomatoes? Am I against tomatoes? I don't know, you know, it's such a broad thing, but I think it should be something very basic and simple. I think it's a big, very consequential undertaking, and just to go from no zoning to what I read, it just seems like just too big a step. As another friend had said, it'd be like going from fifth grade to Harvard. It bound to fail. There needs to be steps if indeed we need to add more. Steps are already, are already rules, regulations, and codes in place, some of which are being very well enforced, and maybe we ought to just get better enforced with the rules we got on the books. Thank you.
I wondered, I just wondered if there's an actual estimated time for, like, for you to vote on it? Do you know, or?
So Hannah is asking about the process.
Don't leave yet, sorry, wait a minute. We need people to stay at the stacked chairs before you go.
If you can, that'd be great.
Please do, help me stack chairs, like, 65 down.
We're asking about, sorry.
I just want to, I want to answer Hannah's question about process, the zoning, the town board cannot vote on anything, Rob, we don't have any.
One more question.
Guys, I want to hear the answer to my question.
It's gone away, I've lost it, so.
Hey, shut up. Hannah's got a question.
So Hannah asked about when the board, I believe, would vote on this, and we don't know. So right now, it's in the zoning commission's hands, and they will vote on it when they feel they have something to vote on. It's their process. And when they do that, then they pass it on to us, and we would have to hold at least one public hearing on the matter, and then we could vote on it. But I cannot hazard a guess as to when that would be. I, you know, I hope it's not too far in the future, but anyway, that's the process. Yeah, you're welcome.